Um, can I get a motion to call the morning, the meeting to order?
To move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I would like to get a motion to convene into a proposed executive session. Um, we have it listed under sections one oh five D and one oh five F of the open meetings law, mostly because we have a bunch of things to discuss, I think six matters, so it's gonna take us a while. So, can we get a meeting, um, a motion for that?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Alright, everyone's ready, let's stand for the pledge. I, Father of the children, St. John, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all. Um, sorry for everybody that you had to wait outside for a bit. Um, is there anybody here that would like to speak for public input one? So, please, one last, one last, there we go. Please state your name.
Yes, good evening, Jeff Peters, three fifty-six Main Street. I'm just here to ask for some recommendations. Um, I would like to, as a taxpayer, have a state audit on Stellamaris to be conducted. I think it's time. Secondly, all, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous up here, but I would love to see a state audit conducted for Stellamaris. Uh, it's getting out of hand over there, and it's time. You're spending a lot of money. Oh, I know what it is. I also would like to see if you can maybe get the middle school gym and have an open forum for the village residents and speak to them and let them know what's going on with Stellamaris. Because everybody's out in the lurch. No one knows really what's going on. You hear the two million dollars over budget, four million dollars, when it's gonna be completed, when it's not gonna be. Um, it's time to be, tell the truth. It's time for the truth to come out. And it's a shame that we're finding out after all this samples of soil, you have arsenic in it. Now, are we gonna do more soil samples? Is it gonna be taken in front of the school? I mean, it, it's getting ridiculous. Uh, it's a, it's a poop shell. It really is, and it's very embarrassing to all of you. And I'm sorry, you have friends on this board, but you should start getting the facts. It's sad that it's gone this far. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public input? Alright, um, moving on, um, items for discussion. So, um, I believe the first is Brandon Broderick to discuss the arsenic testing.
And if I may say, we'd like Mr. Broderick to, uh, speak and provide some additional specific information. De Broderick represents the firm that does the soil testing.
Hi, good evening, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity, and certainly thank you for putting me first. I'm just putting my glasses on at that point, so I don't need, I don't have to read or I need my eyeglasses, so. And my name is Brendan Broderick, I'm president of J.C. Broderick and Associates. So, just quick, a little bit about all firms, so you know who's speaking to you. Uh, we are an environmental consulting and testing firm, we're here on Long Island, we're established in nineteen ninety-eight. Our staff includes a professional geologist, as myself, engineers, industrial hygienists, as well as environmental scientists. So, our experience is, uh, uh, forms around inspection design of third-party monitoring of soil and groundwater remediation projects, such as hazardous waste spills, voluntary cleanup programs, as well as brownfield sites. And we do specialize in sensitive populations. So ninety percent of our client base are schools, hospital, hospitals, and large cooperative residences. So, why are we here today? About, uh, well, why am I here today? About three years ago, in two thousand seventeen, there were changes made to DEC's regulations, specifically part three sixty, which was made, in fact, due to the pollution or contaminated soils that were coming from New York City and illegally being dumped on Long Island. So, uh, to fight that, the DEC came up with changes of what we refer to as BUDs, Beneficial Use Determination, which required any fill, any soils generated on-site in New York City has to be qualified, sampled, and analyzed, and a beneficial use determination has to be made to say that it's safe to be discharged or buried elsewhere, particularly on Long Island. So, in other words, a professional geologist or engineer like myself would have to determine that material to be safe to be used elsewhere, determining a beneficial use determination. So, a lot of this had to do specifically with New York City. But as these changes were implemented, self-implemented mandates came, where different recycling facilities took it upon themselves for liability purposes to start saying, before I take any soil from any site, I wanna have it tested. So those changes happened very recently. Uh, the last one, which mandated or resulted in these self-mandates, was as recent as May of two thousand nineteen, so within the last six months. So this is not something that, uh, it's still not required, it's becoming an industry standard. So it did come out of nowhere. So, what happened at Stellamaris was that they were excavating two areas or creating excess soil in two spaces. The first one was where they had planned for an elevator pit, so they had to excavate that area. And also by retrofitting the, uh, the retaining wall, they were gonna result in excess soil. So as a result of this new regulation and mandates, we needed to go over and test those soils to determine the beneficial use. In other words, where can this soil be reused on Long Island? So we went in and we collected the samples. After we collect these samples, we have to then compare them to the state standards. So these are what we call soil cleanup objectives. Originally, these values were values used by companies like ours, if we're gonna clean up a hazardous waste site, how clean is clean? How clean do we have to make this site, and what's acceptable? Well, they started using these values again to determine general fill. Is this general fill that is clean that can be used onto a different site? So these values that we're talking about, if we exceed them, they're not considered hazardous. Doesn't make that soil hazardous. Uh, it does, it's not an action level, but if you're above these levels, all they're saying is it's not clean enough. What they're trying to avoid is dumping not-so-clean soil onto clean properties. Doesn't make it hazardous or regulated at that point. So when we took the samples, we took two soil samples, one from the area that they were excavating by the elevator pit, and a second sample, the excess soil that was gonna be generated along the retaining wall. Uh, the elevator pit soil came back all within the parameters. So there's nothing excess, which means that's clean fill, that could be used at any residential property, reused anywhere else. Uh, unfortunately, the soil sample that collected from the retaining wall came up slightly elevated. So the allowable concentration for arsenic, and it was only one parameter, which was arsenic, the allowable concentration for arsenic was sixteen parts per million. What we found inside the retaining wall was seventeen point five parts per million. So I just want you to kind of put that into perspective. If you took a, a swimming pool full of soil and you divided it into a million equal parts, sixteen was okay to be reused anywhere? We had seventeen point five, so just one point five higher. Now that's, the difference between seventeen point five and sixteen does not say, again, does not suggest that that material on the site on Stellamaris property is hazardous. It just means it's over that sixteen. So to explain to you what that means, we kinda have to go a little bit about arsenic. So I'll give you two minutes on the background of arsenic. So arsenic is a naturally occurring element. So I know when we hear the word arsenic and we're all thinking about murder on the Orient Express, where somebody's gonna try to murder somebody, well, yeah, or that we're cleaning up a contaminated site created by, uh, man-made, this is not ours. Arsenic is naturally occurring element, it's actually thirty-three on the periodic table. Uh, and it's widely distributed on Earth's crust, so all soil has some concentration. There is no soil on the planet that does not contain some arsenic. So commercially used, like, two thousand four, ninety percent of all commercially produced arsenic was used in pressure-treated wood. So this is the type of wood that we all grew up on, that up to about twenty years ago, where now we're using TREC, like for our decks. Before that, we all used CCA, copper, which is copper-chromated arsenic-treated wood. So ninety percent of the commercially grade arsenic was used in CAA, uh, CCA. The remaining portion was used in pesticide applications and mosquito repellents. So what's to expect it is that, because it's naturally occurring in the soil, any place below any CCA wood or areas of farms that were treated with pesticides are expected to have a higher concentration than you would expect on a basic background. So on Long Island, a good portion of our property, a good portion of Long Island, almost fifty percent, uh, was used for farming in the past, so in the eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. So one of the most famous studies that are referred, referred to quite often is the SONAC study that was done right here on Long Island in nineteen ninety-five, which measured the average mean of arsenic in the soil on any properties that were used as farms in the past. With range between twenty-seven point eight parts per million to fifty-one parts per million. So if you look at the map here, that's just the general area, all the light-colored areas of farms, and this is just one layout of it, like, I think this is the Smithtown area. So a good portion of Long Island, Smithtown, everywhere from Smithtown to Patchogue through here was used as farms, so the, the background concentrations in anywhere that was used as a farm is as high as twenty-seven or to fifty-one parts per million. So in Suffolk County, any agricultural land, they've established status at background level. Non-agricultural lands, like areas that were never developed, we'd expect to see somewhere about two point two six parts per million. Just to put it in perspective, the elevator, uh, sample we collected came back at about two point six four parts per million. So it's on the very low level of the background. In New York State, throughout New York State, there are arsenic-rich geo, uh, deposits. So the concentrations or the background range for New York State ranged between two and twenty parts per million. In rural areas, undeveloped areas, they came at about thirteen parts per million, and then residential came back at sixteen parts per million. So that's where that sixteen comes from. The sixteen is not a health-based guidance value to say it's dangerous or not dangerous. The sixteen means that's what the average is in New York State. That's what they've established as the background concentration for arsenic in New York State. So it's thirteen for undeveloped properties or unrestricted properties, and then sixteen for, uh, for any developed properties. And the reason why is that if we're gonna mandate a cleanup, we can't expect somebody to clean up the property past what the background is. So the question comes down to, is it safe? Arsenic, unlike iron, where our bodies actually use iron in our blood cells to distribute oxygen, there is no beneficial use to arsenic in the human body. So matter of fact, it can, it can impact the cell's growth. So there is no acceptable level of arsenic to a human being. There is no safe level. Uh, but with that said, because all soil contains some arsenic, there are always some level of risk associated with any soils, even natural concentrations. In order for me to say, for instance, and come up with a specific value, remember the sixteen parts per million as a background? In order for somebody to come up and say, what is an allowable concentration that is considered safe or does not increase a risk for any arsenic-related diseases, you would have to do a health assessment. And this health, health assessment would have to identify the age of the occupants, the body weight, what their function is, how often they're coming in contact with the soil, the duration, the frequency, their bioavailability concentrations, et cetera. So in other words, these are big studies, something that's not gonna be done at a local school district level. This would be studies that are typically performed by the EPA, the Department of Health, and the ATSDR, which is the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. What I did do was go around to see, had they done any on Long Island? And, uh, the closest one I could find was done in two thousand sixteen by the Department of Health at the East End Community Organic Farms. So this is a cooperative farm that is used by multiple people for multiple growth. Uh, this, this, they tested the soil there, they found the concentrations of arsenic to be about thirty-three point one. The use of that farm is just that, is gonna be used by different individuals, different, uh, companies, different, I think, uh, Cornell has a cooperative there. And they all used, and they're planting it, they're interacting with the soil, they're planting materials, and they're actually eating it. Uh, the agency identified at that point at the level of thirty-three point one, that does not, the presence of arsenic does not pose a significant concern, or immediate significant concern. A second one that I'd identified being more appropriate towards a school, this one was up in Middleport, New York. Uh, in this area, they actually tested concentrations of arsenic at over five hundred and ninety parts per million, so which is significantly higher. It was used as a school, and the source of the arsenic was from a company called FMC Co., uh, a company who actually manufactured arsenic, or manufactured pesticides that used to let arsenate in it. So they, they actually had the property, they contaminated it with spills and leaks during the development process, and they actually donated the land to the school district. The school district built their buildings on it later on to discover that the soils were as high as five hundred and ninety parts per million arsenic. On this study, the ATSDR and the DOH came in and the DEC, and they identified that the concentrations, the high concentrations in the athletic fields and the use of the athletic field by the children increased the potential for exposure, and they did recommend remediation in the athletic fields, because the concentrations were upwards of five ninety. And an important fact here was that their cleanup objective of what they wanted to get it down to, to consider it clean and safe again, was twenty parts per million. So that was what they, at a school building, they established as a safe level. So the level of risk, again, there is always some level of risk, because all soil contains some arsenic, and there's no such thing as a good arsenic. Uh, in order to determine a comparison value to say, at Stellamaris School, what would be a concern and what would be safe, you would have to petition for a, 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 a health consultation with these agencies. But based upon the different studies that I looked at, it doesn't seem that they mandated or recommended any kind of concern until the concentrations level of arsenic appeared over a hundred parts per bill, uh, a hundred parts per million, which again, keeping in mind, we found seventeen point five. So in general, their opinions of these agencies is that there's a low risk when there's low concentrations of arsenic in the soil. So again, to bring it back into perspective, if you recall, the background level sixteen, we found seventeen and a half parts per million, which is significantly, is again, below the twenty parts per million mandated for the school remediation, is just slightly above the average of what we'd expect in New York State, but again, well below the average that we'd see in most communities. Where did this arsenic come from? It doesn't appear, based upon the samples that we collected, that this is a chronic problem on the Stellamaris area. Uh, usually, if I saw that the property was used as farming in the past, but the Sag Harbor property does not appear that to be the case, it'd be in a way a community, it does not appear that, uh, this area of Sag Harbor was used as a farm in the past. So the other most likely cause would be something associated with cop, that the CCA-treated wood. So if you look over in the picture, it's kinda tough to see, but the, the lower retaining wall, if you look there, it was right where the soil samples were collected on the other side, that lower retaining wall was, uh, pressure-treated wood. So most likely what happened was that the leaching from that went into the soil that resulted in that higher-than-background concentration of arsenic in the soil. So what are you required to do at this point? Uh, as far as the EPA, there's no required action, there's nothing required. Again, this is not an action level, it's not a hazardous level, but considered a hazardous level that would require remediation. The New York State Department of Health does not have any requirements or recommendations. The New York State DEC, the only requirement of this is the beneficial use determination, which means that the school district cannot remove the soil and put it into a residential property, even though it's that one point five parts, unfortunately, just that much more. That soil could legally be reused on the school property if you had, if it, if it was, if there was a beneficial use determined for it, but if it's gonna be removed off-site, it would have to be removed off-site in accordance with the regulations three sixty thirteen. So this is the part where I ask, does anybody have any questions?
This was incredibly helpful, and to put it into context, so thank you, obviously, very knowledgeable. If it was such a low number compared to what has been deemed safe in other circumstances, for instance, I think the average was like, uh, twenty, and you have an organic farm that has almost twice what the soil had, then can you remind us why we had to remove all that soil and ship it out of state if it, if it served no harm?
Again, it's, it comes down to, unfortunately, if this was a, if this was a governing agency, like for instance, let's say the Department of Health, there's this an action, a mandated action to remediation. On something like this, when we're doing sites and we're so close and something's right off, and even we collect different samples, we're gonna see, uh, we can average out the results, we can communicate directly with the governing agency and put it in perspective and ask them for relief. This is not the case. In other words, now we have to remove the soil, somebody's gotta accept it. So these places that, these recycling facilities, they're not, they're not under the mandate, they're just not going to accept it. So in other words, so in other, by law, we have to show them the analyze. It's up to them whether or not they'll accept it or not. And the only ones that would accept it at this point was Carteret in New Jersey, and that was the only one that would, you know, that accepted it. So unfortunately, it's not, it comes down to where this is a brand-new law, uh, everybody's still a little on edge on how to, you know, how to make sure that they're in compliance. So there wasn't any agency that we can discuss with to say, can we get a little bit of a break on here because we're only one point five parts per million? This was strictly about, can I take it to your site, will you accept it? They refused, you had to go to the next one, and the only one that would accept it was the Carteret site in New Jersey.
Got it. So it wasn't removed because it was contaminated, it was removed for another purpose, but because this somewhat arbitrary amount, or, or where it was against a level was found, that's incurred the cost to have it parted. And that's why the organic farm doesn't have to remove it, although it's twice as high.
Right, so the organic farm is using the soil, they don't need to remove it from their site, so it's perfect, there's no action requiring them to remove it. It's, it's, it's very, it's just like when you open these new laws, when they develop a new law, they don't have that, that ripple effect where they try to understand what's happening. So they're, they're trying to figure it out as they go along as well.
There had been some, um, folks at our last meeting who had, uh, thought that perhaps we should be taking other samples throughout the, um, property to test it. Do you have a recommendation on whether that's useful at all, um, and for what purpose it's a?
So in addition to the samples that we collected here, when we excavated all the soil from the retaining wall and put it in a pile, we had to re-sample that again for disposal, and the concentrations all came back less than the sixteen at that point. So what this is telling is, based upon the sampling, it does not appear to be a chronic problem on the site, and because it was right up, and we had the, the historic photo go to show that the source was most likely associated with that retaining wall, not the general area of the community. Uh, so based upon that, as far as what we call RBCs or recognized environmental concerns, this wouldn't fall under that. Uh, if you were gonna take samples, we would, it would have to be something where it would have to show a high exposure rate, and if we did identify it, our recommendation would be just to cap it, meaning put some type of cover over it. So in other words, arsenic soil, if, if in fact it was higher, it was underneath an asphalt parking lot, it poses no threat to anybody on the site. If it's below a concrete sidewalk, poses no threat. Uh, if it's under dense vegetation like a lawn, it would not pose any threat. So it really would be, if we're gonna identify and, you know, sample to see if any more of it is on it, our answer would be to do what most likely is already being done on the site in the sense that it be capped.
But if you found a sample and it had the same amount as they did in the back, it sounds like from what you're saying, there would be no remediation action you would recommend.
Correct.
Because it's, it's so low.
The only thing we would recommend is capping it, so to minimize, you know, any potential exposure.
But to your knowledge and expertise, I mean, those levels, I understand for older kids, but this could be like four-year-old kids there. I mean, do you think those levels could be like more threatening to them?
I, if, the, the, there's levels, there's really no data per se to help people figure out what's a safe level in the soil, like a wall. Data associated with arsenic, it's been, arsenic, most arsenic contamination or arsenic poisoning has happened when it's in the groundwater, and people are drinking it on a continuous basis. So we would have to figure out, that's just because it's in the soil, how often they're in the soil, how much are they eating? And even if you eat it, there's still what we call bioavailability, how much of it is gonna make it into your system, how much will be discharged? So based upon the data I saw, they don't look to be a concern on something like that until it's over a hundred parts per million. Keeping in mind that most communities on Long Island, fifty percent of the soils on Long Island were used for farming in the past, we're expecting it to see at levels of thirty, forty, fifty parts per million. Uh, and we've, and that's what we've seen. Usually, we, we have a property and we know that it's been used as a farm in pa, in the past, I'm expecting to see thirty, forty parts per million in the soil. So to see seventeen and a half, to me, is unremarkable.
So you don't think those younger kids, you know, of age, they're gonna have much more of an exposure?
No, I would expect that they would have to be plant, in it, potentially eating it eight hours a day. And I, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna let that happen.
Four-year-olds could do that, so.
No, that, it would have to be a prolonged, a prolonged exposure.
It's a reason to not have full age.
It would seem like the supervision would be really poor if they're eating it eight hours a day. Um, the other thing is, it wasn't farmland, but you know, across the street is a condo complex that was originally a, a factory that had all sorts of issues with, and had cost millions of millions of dollars for remediated, lots of chemical problems. Um, and there were other, um, industrial sites throughout downtown Sardegrove that had that. But from what you're telling us, the soil doesn't indicate that we're seeing those kinds of problems.
Right, the only, the only thing we saw was, the only contaminant we saw above, uh, the soil cleanup objectives was arsenic, and it was only one point five.
Right.
Point, part per million above.
But you gave us a proposal if we wanted to test the rest of the site.
Yes, yeah, I mean, like I said, we could do it, but I would let, I don't know how much of the area, I would, like, in other words, there's no benefit to me testing the soil underneath the asphalt or something like that. From what I understand, the playgrounds are gonna have, uh, a, a rubber covering as well, so I would limit it to just areas that they could possibly be exposed to.
But you're saying that you don't really, you don't really think it's a?
I, I don't say, yeah, uh, based upon, as a, this is not would be what we call a recognized environmental condition, but, uh, that, and at the concentrations we saw, it doesn't, it doesn't necess, you know, make it necessary. It would be completely electric.
I wanna thank you for coming out and shedding some light on this. I, I think last week we had some board members that were really concerned, and I think that the presentation that you gave us really helped us understand in context what's happening and how it happened and why, and I just really wanna thank you.
I hope it does alleviate, when I saw, when I saw the news, you know, the art, you know, the Channel Twelve News or whatever it was, I was like, well, I don't, I, this doesn't make any sense. It's, uh, literally the levels we were seeing here are below what the average would be in Suffolk County. So I hope it alleviates some.
How long would that testing take for your proposal?
Uh, about a week. Uh, you know, yeah, about a week, we're gonna have to get the analysis and everything.
And was there any other environmental, like, was there, with the watch case across the street, the underground plume, was that ever, did, nothing?
Uh, again, the, uh.
That'd be the groundwater?
Most of this soil would be onsite discharges. Uh, we didn't see evidence, we wouldn't have seen evidence of that. Looking at aerial photographs, looks like this was a school building for a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, suggesting that, that they weren't part of those industrial processes. Uh, and as far as any underground plumes, they're gonna be monitored by the DEC and the EPA under, under their voluntary cleanup objectives. So, uh, if they saw some kind of a concern with adjoining properties, they would be obligated to notify. For instance, what we've seen in, like, Bethpage, with the underground plume there.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moving on to item five point two, we have, um, I believe Dr. Mears is going to provide an update on, um, policy committee updates.
Sure. So.
Is there something, Jeff?
I thought we were gonna try to, to move forward with teachers.
Yes, shall we flip it or flip the order?
Yeah.
That works. Um, let's go to five point four, uh, educational goals. Uh, what are we doing? Just keep going in his.
This one? All right, well, good evening, everyone. So tonight, we, we have representatives from the three buildings, and I have with me Kate Popaski, who is the reading specialist at the elementary school. As, um, the Board of Ed knows, over, um, the last few years, I've referred to the Ames Web assessments, which provide us at the elementary school data that we use to make some informed decisions, specifically up until this point, about our, um, reading instruction. Obviously, at the elementary school, developing strong readers, I will eventually become critical readers as, as they, as they progress through school, is, is a primary goal. And we always wanna make sure that our instruction is matching the needs of the children. And Ames Web, as a platform, has been very helpful to us at the elementary building for a number of years. This school year, the platform changed, so one of our goals was to make sure that we provided the right support for the rollout of the new platform. And I, I'm really grateful to Kate, who served as a leader of her fellow teachers to help with this rollout. We had reps from GOCs come in early in the year to train everybody that would be working with the assessments. This is a computer-based assessment, so that was a bit of a, a bit of a change, whereas in the past, it was, um, more paper, paper pencil-driven. Um, we do use the screening tool three times a year, meaning that all children in the building, K through five, are screened in the, um, early literacy skills at the younger ages, and eventually their full reading skills as they progress forward. Part of this goal this year is to begin screening in mathematics. Our initial plan was to do that at mid-year with the, um, technology issues that we have been working through. We, we did decide to just put that on pause, we're going to move on to that shortly because we're, you know, we're back up and running. But what we would like to do tonight is just briefly, and I'm gonna let Ms. Popaski do this, just kinda give a quick overview of how do we use this data to inform the instruction? just kinda give a quick overview of how do we use this data to inform the instruction, whether it be for a teacher's class or individual students who may need some enrichment or some intensive support. Okay?
Hi, everybody. So I basically live and breathe AIMS Web all day, every day. So I've become very familiar with it. It's a program we've been using since I came into the job. And as Mr. Malone said, this current year, we signed onto the new platform, which has been available to school districts for the last couple of years. And they finally said to us, you have to switch. The old platform is gonna be non-existent. So we switched over and I have to say, I can't be happier with the program. It's, it's given a lot of useful information. Not that the old program didn't, and I'm gonna actually show you some data in a moment. But what it has really done, especially with the online component, is it's given us an insight as to not only how children are reading out loud in the oral reading fluency, but also how they're performing with vocabulary, reading comprehension, and a component at fourth and fifth, which is called silent reading fluency. So it really kinda lets us get a good picture of a student as a whole, as a reader. Whereas the old program, we were really focusing more on the oral reading fluency. So as we said, the computer-based piece of this is done at grades two through five. And that has definitely been a little bit of a learning curve. So I'm sort of that person in my office where a lot of people have either come to me or called me, they're having problems getting on, or a lot of people actually have been coming to me about the data and looking at the data. So I've been kind of doing private one-to-one sessions with the teachers to kinda show what the data has. And a lot of people, when they get to see that data of how a child is progressing, especially now that we just finished our winter benchmark, to see how that child has progressed. There's also built into this a progress monitoring tool. So after looking at the data, those children that are in need of a little bit more extra help, we are able to set up progress monitoring for them either on a weekly basis, a bi-weekly basis, or a monthly basis. And that can also be done at their level. So if they're not currently performing on their current level, let's say a third grader is not performing at third grade, we can actually drop that assessment down to an appropriate level, let's say second grade, and progress monitor them until they close that gap. So I've been training teachers on how to do that, so it's been, been very helpful. Data, did you wanna touch base on that?
Yeah, so I'm gonna be jumping in on some of the slides. Good evening, Colonel Mears, PPS Director. When we talk about supporting students with special needs, it's really important that we embed that support through all the multi-tiered systems, universal, targeted individual. And this is a great opportunity, AIMS Web, and Kate does an awesome job in training all teachers, special education and general education. And also putting, as they're, you know, tracking data, and you said you were adjusting based on grade level, AIMS Web also gives us an aim line for progress. So when we look at writing individual education plan goals for reading, we wanna know that there's a certain rate of progress and that students are progressing with reading. And the awesome thing about this is we do it for all children. So it meets IP objectives as well as personal learning plans for students who need specialized reading.
So I'm gonna just show you some snapshots of some of the, of what it looks like. So what I took here was, this is the most current benchmark testing for a third grade class, and it's comparing them nationally. So if we take a look at this class, you can see that they're doing really well. And then what it shows you is those children, those green bars are the average. And then as you get down to the bottom, it shows your above average and your well above average, and it shows you as percentiles. So you can get an idea of where that child is performing overall in their percentile. But then, what I also like is if you look off to the right, I know it's kinda hard to see, it's a little blurry, it has vocabulary and reading comprehension and oral reading fluency. That's what that stands for at the top. So for example, if we take a look at that first child, that child is clearly at risk. And it indicates that not only by the fact that they're in the orange in one of the lower percentiles, but also there's a little exclamation point and alert that comes up saying that this child is going to need some intervention. So looking at this, you know, Mr. Malone and I, after we do all the benchmark screening in the beginning of the year, we look at all of this data and we make that decision of, you know, which child needs support? How many times a week do they need support? What do they need support in? And then based on this, I put together a skill plan for that child or that group of children with things that they need to work on each time they meet in those sessions so that they can be successful. And it's based off of this data. So this particular child, if you look at this one, I actually believe this is from the fall. The child at the top clearly is not working up to their grade level standards. So most likely, when we set up the progress monitor for this child, we're gonna drop it down to second grade and see how they do. And I will show you that in a minute. But on the other end of things, if you look at that child at the bottom, that child is well above average. So it also lets the teachers know that that child needs enrichment. You know, that they are an avid reader, they're a good reader, their comprehension is strong. So that needs to be considered as well in the classroom. And we're very blessed in the elementary school that we have support in our rooms for reading, writing, and math. So we're able to differentiate our reading instruction with the use of our wonderful teaching assistants. So this is, you know, very helpful data, and I think that the teachers are appreciative of being able to see this. The other piece of this, you know, you can see that some of the kids did okay with the vocabulary, but their reading comprehension is a little bit below average. So that's something that we would take into consideration. We would make that decision, is that a child that needs to be pulled? Or is that something that can be addressed in the classroom with the support that's already in the room? And then a lot of the kids that are in the ORF, that are either in the yellow or the orange, whether they're getting pull-out support or push-in support, I still monitor them monthly to see if we can close that gap. And the beauty of AIMS Web is that it, it, when you set up the progress monitoring schedule, whether you do it monthly or bi-weekly, it helps you set the rate of progress. So the old program, you kinda had to guess what their goal would be by the end of the year. This is this beautiful little tool that kind of, you slide it and it shows what's, what would be, what would be an appropriate goal. You know, it'll tell you, if you slide it too far, it's gonna say you're being overly ambitious. You need to back it up. And that's been very helpful. And what I'm finding is the kids are actually reaching their goals faster, and then I'm moving them on to grade level. So I will show you one of those.
We can move to that next one, right?
Yeah.
So this is now showing an individual student?
Yep, so that individual student, who happened to be the very bottom of that class list, happens to be one of my third graders that I work with. And you can see, what I've given you is I've given you his benchmark progress, which is on the left-hand side, and his progress monitoring is on the right-hand side. So if we take a look at his benchmark progress, you can see that he was well below average for his oral reading fluency. Since we've been working together and we've been, you know, working on the interventions, he is now very close to the average. He's still below average, but I think it's only off by like a percentile, which is great to see. Clearly, in the beginning of the year, this child was not at third grade level. So I actually dropped the student back to second grade, got a baseline for him. And then that's what you see on the right-hand side. So I've tested him monthly, and you can see that projection line that Dr. Mears was talking about. So he started at fifty-eight words per minute at second grade level, when I gave him the baseline. And at the end of December, he's up to eighty-two words per minute at the second grade level. He also, now that we tested the benchmark, he's actually within that range of third grade reading material. So now, I make that decision, do I switch him now to third grade progress monitoring when we go monthly? So it's been very helpful. This is something that the teachers have, like I said, need a lot of support with, and I'm kind of there to show them how to do this. But I think once they realize the value in it and they get to see that, like, what you're doing is paying off, it's been, it's been a great tool. And it's helped, it's definitely helped guide our reading instruction, both, you know, for your weak readers, your middle-of-the-road readers, and our advanced readers.
No, just as I said at the beginning, we also, we believe that similar information will help us guide and enhance our instruction in mathematics. So that's why we're going to pursue the rollout of the mathematics modules shortly. Should be able to get two screenings done this year and then have a full year next year, so. Should be very helpful in that area as well.
Is this, is this first through fifth grade?
This is K through five.
We do it at K through five.
So there's different assessments. So at like kindergarten, we test letter naming fluency and letter word sound fluency. And then at first grade, they actually, the only thing needed for composite for first grade is actually the oral reading fluency. However, we use some of the other components to kinda see how they're doing. Like at the beginning of the year, we did phoneme segmentation, where they have to tap out the sounds and words. And we did letter word sound fluency. This current testing round, we did nonsense word fluency. So it's these little short, like PIM, LAT, BOT, you know, seeing how they can decode those words. And then we also did word reading, which is sight word lists within a minute. So there's different assessments. And then two, three is oral reading fluency, style, vocab and reading comp. And then fourth and fifth, they add that silent reading fluency component to the online test nav. So it kinda builds, and it really has definitely helped, both in the classroom and in the RTI program, to kind of pinpoint exactly what each child needs.
All right, and then just briefly, before we hand things over to middle school and the high school, you could say we have a great resource, Ms. Popaski. She, she does a great job, both with what we talked about with, with AIMS Web. But along with Dr. Mears, Ms. Reynoso, all the teachers, we're always talking about that, that first level of instruction, the instruction that we give to all children. And a good school is going to focus most of their attention, obviously, on that and making sure that all children are getting the best possible program. If acceleration or remediation is needed, that's how we may use some additional resources. But over the last two years, we've decided as a faculty to really hone in on our units of study, K through five. We, with the support of the Board of the Community, we, we've brought in Dr. Linda Vouse. She's been working closely with our teachers to examine our units of study in reading, specifically guided reading, and make sure that we're aligning with standards as well as just best practices in elementary reading instruction. And we found that to be very successful for everybody. We're really pleased with the outcome so far, and we're going to continue that through the year.
Yeah, and I just jumped in, and I just jumped in for little bullets. And so when we look at the best way to support students with disabilities or varying needs is the good first instruction. So the better we get at universal instruction or good first instruction in the multi-tiered system of support, the less likely we're gonna have, need the need for students who need specialized service. So if we embed that differentiation in universal system, we reduce the need of isolating students for specialized support.
Scott, is this?
The right end?
No, the right side of that one.
Go here.
Actually, the beginning is yours, and then I put some bullets in, I can take it.
Yeah, well, it segues into the next one, so I'll let you jump in. But basically, we broke down our, when I say our, the middle school, high school presentation into a few different pieces. The first one looks at data points and other considerations that we look at in trying to improve student success. So the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about assessment data, but we also look at formal observations. We have feedback from students, other forms of evaluation that we do. When we look at assessments, we're looking at AP, IB, Regents assessments, three through eight, near state assessments. And we're also looking at monitoring not only summative assessments, but formal assessments that teachers administer throughout the year.
Yeah, sure, so part of what we wanna look at too is post-secondary outcomes. What are our students doing after high school? And not all of our students are going to four-year colleges or universities, some are and some aren't. So when we look at students with disabilities, we're required by Part Two of the regulation to look at transition coordination service. What we did was we looked at a resource allocation and was able to put aside some funding through a grant for a transition coordinator. And what we're doing is building the internal capacity to create coordinated set of activities for graduation. And a lot of those things include needs assessments. We've already redesigned parent and student questionnaires as well as transition plans. We've updated coordinated set of activities to align with the expectations at the grade levels for all students, just not students looking at the university pathway. In addition, it's really important to get quality service out here in the East End. One of the ways to do that is to demonstrate the need. What we've seen is a lack of application for things like Access VR, which is to help students maintain employment after school, if that's what they choose to do after high school, and live independently. So we've increased completion in Access VR and increased access for parents and support for parents and students to fill out those applications. Additionally is OPWDD, which is Office Persons with Developmental Disabilities. And there's eligibility for support service, like RESTED. So time away, because sometimes it gets, it gets to be a lot to support children. It's coordinated care, access to activities, unified sports, things like that. Additionally, some of the measures now we're moving, shifting overall is the reading focus group. To go, and Kate's part of that reading focus group. We have a district-wide reading focus group to really articulate what we do in reading for all students through that multi-tiered system of support. And lastly, we targeted algebra and mathematics, because we saw a gap in achievement for students with disabilities in algebra. And we changed that service delivery model. I worked with the principals, and Brittany, you were a great help with that as well. And we changed that two-year algebra to an algebra with a specialized class to support it. And that's the model we'll move forward for all regions, where we have that regions clause, that class, and then a lab, we're calling a lab, to support that. And that'll be a small group of five to six students, and it'll be accessible to all students, not just students with disabilities, to increase our pass rate and our success on regions in the algebra coursework.
So I mentioned it before, but the, the process of consistently analyzing student achievement happens throughout the year, and it actually is a multi-year process. So you've, you've had the administration present the assessment results every year in the IB, the AP, Regents in the three through eight. And what we look for are patterns in terms of student performance where we're doing really well and perhaps where we're not doing as well as we believe we, we could be doing. And when we have a situation where students aren't performing perhaps as well as we think they should, we will talk to the teachers and get their input. We'll also talk to the students, we'll talk to parents. So let me give you a concrete example. In mathematics, our mastery rate is not equal with that of the other disciplines. And we've made some significant strides, I believe, in the last few years. And a lot of that was due to some staffing changes in terms of instructional time at the middle level. This year, or in this budget cycle, we've actually, we're going to propose that we change instructional time at the high school level. We've noticed that in geometry and in Algebra II, students are not performing at the level we think they should be performing at. But in addition, we're getting feedback from parents and students that they're putting a disproportionate amount of effort into those courses. So a lot of them have tutors outside of school, a lot of them are flooding academic support. And so part of the way we approached it is I had our math department chair, Chase Malia, look into how much instructional time top-performing districts are providing for geometry and Algebra II. And what we found out is that they are offering fifty percent more instructional time than we are. So kids are getting seven and a half periods of instruction a week versus the five that we offer. So our proposal for next year's budget is to increase instructional time in those two courses, geometry and Algebra II. And we're hoping that that will prepare students better for what follows next and also that they'll ultimately grasp the material more comprehensively. The other area that we did a similar analysis, and I don't have a slide for it this evening because I think I'm gonna do a separate presentation on it, but I've mentioned it before here, is our ENL staffing levels. We've had a significant uptick in the number of ENL students at the middle school, high school, but we've also had a significant increase in the number of students with interrupted formal educations. In other words, students who are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years old, who are coming to us with two or three years of schooling. And we're having to adjust our staffing levels to meet their needs. So at a subsequent meeting, we'll also be bringing you information about the changes. we're proposing there with regard to staffing levels. The third area, professional development, a lot of our professional development over the last several years has been in, several years, more like seven or eight years, has been in IB training. But related to that, there are also standards that come out at the state level and the national level, and we need to stay abreast of those. So tonight, I've asked the faculty, the lead teachers, rather, in the five disciplines, math, social studies, English, and foreign language, to present, and I told them to hold it to two or three minutes, maybe, each, each area, sort of an overview of the primary considerations and what you're doing in your role as lead teachers with your peers. So our first presenter is, I think it's Mr. Malia, right? Yes. Any questions?
I have some questions about the lab section, and I don't know if Mr. Malia will answer Dr. Mears?
Yes.
You had mentioned that you're proposing a lab section. Was that just for algebra, for the students with disabilities and the, and the others open to all students, or was that for all the courses?
So we're growing that out. Brittany, I've been working with the scheduling.
Yeah, so what happened was when we all looked at the data, all my chef, myself, Carleen and I, we saw that there was a huge gap of students with disabilities in passing the algebra regions. So we piloted it this year with this lab portion for the students. So they have an inclusion class of algebra, and then an extra skills class or a lab period as well to reinforce it.
They sit in a regular course with their peers and then?
And it gets reinforced afterwards.
And I've had great success with that before. So we have, we've had students, I was brought into a high school one time, and I rearranged the delivery for algebra. And basically, the students were not passing that. So what we did is what I call a double dose. So we took the algebra class, inclusive class, and then we had a smaller group, differentiated, highly individualized support, so that we could find the gaps that we're holding back with task analysis and kind of close that gap in order to increase the likelihood of passing those algebra. And we had great success with that. And I was hoping to see the same thing here. So we piloted that with the hopes of whenever we have a Regents class, we can just pair it up. And the nice thing about that is it's a small group, which is a great setting that we can offer here in South Harbor. And that means we don't have to separate students with disabilities, that any student that would need that extra support could access that support, which I think is a great opportunity here.
So does that mean that, because Mr. Nichols just mentioned that he's thinking about time and a half for geometry and Algebra II. Is currently the Regents course time and a half as well? And so then these kids are getting double time? Or is the current Regents course a five period, and then these guys are getting time and a half? And then everybody's going to get time and a half?
The latter.
Yeah. Any questions about the geometry and Algebra II?
That's, that's time and a half for everybody, right? That's not the same model for algebra?
Right.
The only question I have on that is just given that there's only so many hours in a day, what is that in place of?
We're going to have to, it will impact electives, which is the same discussion we had when we increased the instructional time in mathematics at the middle school. Students will have fewer elective offerings. But that's a byproduct of the choice to focus on math and to raise the achievement there. Ready to go, Mr. Malia?
All right. Okay. Good evening. Since our last presentation last, I think it was last January, we were here, the math department has been making some significant progress in preparing for the rollout of the next generation learning standards. I'm here tonight to provide an update on that progress. As a brief introduction, the 2011 Common Core learning standards will be slowly phased out over the next coming years and replaced by the 2017 Next Generation Learning Standards. The new standards reflect revisions, additions, vertical movement, and clarifications of the current standards. The new standards incorporate feedback from various stakeholder groups, including parents, curriculum specialists, administrators, college professors, and teachers. Whereas the new standards will represent a major shift in some subject areas, in mathematics, the differences between the old Common Core learning standards and the new Next Generation Learning Standards are more evolutionary than revolutionary. To prepare for the new standards, I've been attending Bosie's Math Department Coordinator meetings to collaborate with other math coordinators from other school districts and pass along updates from the State Education Department. Since we last met, the State has made the final revisions to the Next Generation implementation timeline. So looking at the timeline, we're still in the building capacity stage for preparations. This year's three through eight exams represent the final administration of the Common Core learning standards for those grades, and the Next Generation aligned exams will begin next spring, in spring 2021. Meanwhile, our Regents level courses will phase out the Next Generation aligned exams beginning in spring 2022 for Algebra I, and spring 2023 for geometry, and spring 2024 for Algebra II. So those will be the first administrations of those new exams. The State will slowly phase out the Common Core learning exams during that time, as shown on the flow chart. The math department has also been looking at snapshot and crosswalk documents from New York State. These snapshot documents provide an overview of the grade level changes. So it's a one-page, sometimes two-page summary of what the differences are from the old standards to the new standards. And it's a nice little single-page document that teachers can look at that will help them. They include the standards that have been added, removed, some key instructional highlights, and some considerations that teachers should make in implementing the new standards. The State has also provided us with crosswalk documents. And if you look, you could see on the left panel is the old Common Core. On the right panel is the new Next Generation Learning Standards. So it's easy for teachers to make comparisons between the two. They clearly articulate where the standards have been added and removed. They show revisions and modifications with bold and italicized text. They've reworded the standards so that our elementary school teachers can more readily access what they mean by the changes. And generally speaking, these documents are very useful to our teachers in planning for the new changes to the curriculum. The Engage New York modules, which are currently used by many of our teachers, will no longer be updated for the Next Generation Learning Standards. So that's a major shift. As such, the math department has been hard at work investigating supplements and substitutes for the Engage New York modules and the Math Excel platform that we've grown accustomed to using in middle school. As we shift from the phase of building capacity to implementing the new standards, our teachers in the, in the middle school are beginning to phase in the Next Generation curriculum. In the coming months, the State will be releasing information about the layout and reference tables for next year's three through eight exams. We expect to have both by the summer of 2020. Overall, we're pretty confident that the approach the State has taken has, this time around, unlike Common Core, the first time around, has given us sufficient time to prepare for the shift to the new standards. And with that, I'm going to introduce Ms. Bianchi with English.
Pardon me. Is it okay if we ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. I'll make it fast. So, because you used, it was very informative, you used some technical terms, so I want to make sure I understood what you said. So it sounds like there are new standards being rolled out. So new standards, different, some different content, presented in a different way, and tested differently? Is that accurate?
So the standards, for the most part, are being revised, and we're talking about incremental changes, changes that reflect some teacher feedback about, for example, I teach seventh grade. In seventh grade, there's a lot of content. It spirals with sixth grade, and then it spirals with some of the eighth grade and algebra topics. They found that there's a lot in that grade, and some of the feedback they got from teachers is there's too much. So they're shifting some of those standards down into sixth grade, where they felt like there was some room for teachers to go and explore more breadth. So they're, they're mostly minor changes that reflect the feedback of the teachers, the curriculum specialists. The tests, we don't know what they're going to look like yet, but we're told that by this summer, we should have a better idea.
And this, you mentioned supplemental materials. Will it be very prescribed about what you teach and how?
No, the standardization is more with the goals or the objectives of the student. The State leaves it up to the schools to establish more personalized and differentiated instructions at the local level. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one last question, just to tie into what Mr. Malone was saying. I saw on the two-year curriculum overhaul at the elementary school, ELA mentioned, Mr. Malone, is there a similar project taking place with the math at the elementary school with the curriculum alignment to the standards?
Well, as Mr. Malia just, just stated, the snapshot documents, as an example, represent, you know, in a quick overview, the changes between the Common Core curriculum and Next Generation standards. And in looking at those with the elementary teachers, the, the changes are incremental. There is some specific language that's been adjusted. It's something we're looking at, but right now, not in overhaul, no. We, we have been using the modules, K through five, and as a, you know, a general framework, we've found those to, to be very supportive. But also, as Chase just said, the teachers over the years have become familiar enough with those that they've now been able to, you know, add their own supplements to that and make adjustments as needed to present the material in a more age-appropriate way.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Bianchi, and I teach ninth and 12th grade in the high school. I believe Mrs. Archer, it's so loud. I believe Mrs. Archer, last year during this presentation, really showed you all the different ways that the Next Generation is different than Common Core, and it really, for English, is not that big of a change. So I just made two slides, one that you can look at yourself. This is just what's still important, what's still there. And this slide, which, what is, which is what is new. What we've been focusing on, because like I said, pretty much, all they really did was take the Common Core and clean it up and make it much more accessible and less soul-crushing for the children. So we're very happy and very excited about Next Generation. So what we started talking about ourselves, our goals, was we want to look at the diversity in the literature that we are teaching, grade seven through 12, of the authors. How many of those were not white Anglo-American authors? So that's something that we took on at our first meeting this year. And we found that as of right now, for the 2019, 2020 school year, somebody who had went from, in our school, from seven through 12, 37 works would have been not authored by a white Anglo-American male. So that would encompass, the breakdown is 14 novels, 15 poems, five short stories, and three plays, which is, we're pretty happy with, because we were sort of surprised at first. We weren't really sure, like, we hadn't ever really thought about it. So now, going forward, we are very mindful of that, and that is one of our goals. So as we're approaching our budget time, when we start ordering in May, that's something that we are all looking to add to as we're going through. Another change that, one of our goals this year is, because a lot of, for the Next Generation, there's not much happening, so much different in the English curriculum, but there is in the reading and writing for science and for social studies. And there's a lot of ways that we are interdependent. And one of the things I thought was really interesting that we noticed is that in the 10th grade, global Regents, they have to, and I know that Mrs. White Dunn is going to talk more about it, it's a much different Regents exam than previously. And the kids have to come into this exam knowing endurance, enduring issues. And they have to know them, what they are, and read a series of articles, and then write an essay, document-based, and address those enduring issues. The interesting thing that we noticed is that the IB this year, the present 11th grade is the first grade to take the new IB English course. And it's very interesting, because IB, and we were kind of surprised, kind of caught us off-guard a little bit, they're doing the same thing, but it's for English. So that the present 11th and 12th, well, 11th grade, when they're 12th grade next year, their assessments, they have to talk about, and theirs isn't called enduring issues, but it's the same thing. Theirs is a list put out called Sustainable Development Goals, as compiled by the United Nations Development Program. And they have to analyze literature and address some of those sustainable issues. So it's really the same thing. So what we started doing in ninth grade this year, we did a tolerance project. And it was with ninth grade English and global. And its students had to discuss three enduring issues, give it examples from six different articles that were global, global issues. And then also relate those issues to American Born Chinese, which is a graphic novel that we read in English class. So these kids are only ninth grade, they're going to take the exam in tenth, but we just wanted to see, like, get them used to writing in that way and thinking in that way, and using factual documents, but also fictional. So it was really interesting. They did amazing. We were blown away with the results. Everyone, because we weren't sure how, how, how everybody was going to address it, everybody did get the concept. And of course, there's a range of developing to, so, you know, beyond our wildest expectations. But what we want to do is build on that, have at least two more assignments this year in the ninth grade level. And in the English department, we're discussing on how the 10th grade English class can support that, because it isn't only supporting the global class, it is also supporting IB. And currently, in the 11th grade, there's almost 50% of the 11th grade is taking IB English. So they're all going to have to know how to do it. So our goal this year is to sort of cross over as much as we can. And that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Mr. Schulman?
Yeah, Mr. Schulman's next. Your last could be a few more. You have to be the play that's on.
Good evening. Clint Schulman, the physics teacher and lead teacher of the Science Department. So this is the, there's really not much updates on the new science curriculum. This is the timeline, so the important dates are June 2020, that's the last administration of the grade four science test, according to the old standards. And then June 2021 is the last administration of the grade eight science test with the old standards. In June 2022, that's going to be the first administration of the new standards for grades five and eight. Essentially, we need to be implementing the new standards now. However, the State is pretty vague on what the actual content is going to be. It's not laid out like the math curriculum is right now. And in June 2023 is the administration of biology. So they label it biology now, it used to be called living environment, so I don't know if that's, they're going to change it back to biology. And now it's called Earth and Space Science. So those will be those Regents exams. And then in June 2024, they'll be administering the chemistry and physics Regents. So I went to a status conference back in the beginning of November, so that's the Science Teachers Association of New York State, to give us some insight on what's going to change. So my findings were, when we're doing labs now, they're going to be a lot similar to how IB labs go, where it's open-ended. The students are be given a problem and have to figure out what the relationships are, test those relationships, and then support their findings. So in the past, there's a lot of cookbook-style labs where, as far as a procedure, the student's step one, do this, step two, do this, and then state your results. So now the students are going to have time to develop a procedure. They can go through that procedure, and it can be wrong, and now we have to provide the time for them to go back and fix it. So I kind of like that, because it allows students to make mistakes, but also a chance to correct it. Whereas in the past, they made a mistake, it was marked wrong, there's no chance to reevaluate themselves. Definitely more open-ended questioning and project-based learning. So science tends to lend itself to this. The curriculum will involve more projects where students can continue to develop their models and also allow time for peer evaluation. And then another big phrase that I've been hearing is something called a 3D learning environment. So by practices, they're incorporating situations that engineers experience, and engineers typically are creating designs to solve a problem. Core ideas refers to, well, that's dealing with the curriculum and assessments itself. To be considered a core idea, it should pertain to multiple sciences or engineering disciplines and relate to real-life experiences, and also be teachable at multiple grade levels. And then the cross-cutting concepts have applications across all the domains of science. And then the last thing is phenomena-based learning. And I kind of like this, because that's how I teach my class. I show a demonstration, and the kids try to figure out what really went on. So for example, one thing that I do is I have a copper pipe, and I tell them I have a rock that was mined on Jupiter's moon Io. So they're like, well, they're thinking to themselves, oh, we've been to Io? No, we haven't. But I'm going to put this rock in the pipe, and it's going to fall at the acceleration due to gravity on Io, because this rock came from Io. And so we put the rock in the pipe, and it falls at a slower rate. And so we put the rock in the pipe and it falls at a slower rate. So they're stunned. But, you know, I'm not telling them the answers. They have to figure out like what's really going on here. And eventually they realize it's something to do with magnetism and a current is being generated in that pipe. But now it's going to give us time to let them come up with some other lab that's going to test this phenomenon. So I think it's interesting. So, so far, the department meetings that we've had, you know, I've been giving teachers update on the possible changes. So anything that I come across, I send out to them. I've shown them examples of lesson plans, some things that I've done already this year. Reviewed nice documents to see what changes are in the curriculum. Exploring websites as potential resources. So a big one is Paul Anderson's Wonder of Science and also the Georgia Science Teachers Association. The Pearson Middle School teachers have already been incorporating some of these methods. So they also have a new textbook that they've been using. And so, yeah, I've just been making the teachers more aware of upcoming workshops that they may want to attend according to the new standards. So, any questions?
Just curious, when you say attend workshops, are those online or distance learning? So they have access or do they have to travel far to go?
Most of them are at Eastern or Western Suffolk Bowses. The best thing is really the status conferences that they have in November. It's, I've been, it's the best thing ever. So.
Hi, I'm Rocio Gutierrez. I teach Spanish and I am here to speak for foreign languages, which we really didn't call it foreign languages. It's been languages other than English. And now there are, there's nothing new really. We keep what has been established for a few years. There is a pushing forward to a change instead of saying languages other than English because English is the last word there. And we're trying to be more global and call it world languages. And so there are no changes. The curriculum stays the same and the assessments are also the same. Okay. So having said that, that we're trying to move away from saying English when we're talking about other languages, it's funny that New York State is looking at the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. Notice foreign languages there. So the American Council is also going to change the name. So I'm assuming, we're guessing that it's going to perhaps be the American Council of Teaching World Languages. And we, the standards, the curriculum is the same. We, what we're doing now is we're trying to move towards the IB model, which is more communication. And IB changed the assessment. This is the first year that is different. There's a push for listening to authentic sources. Thank God for YouTube. And we're very lucky where we are. We have a lot of Spanish native speakers, but we do not have French native speakers as much. So our department, we have been discussing the possibilities of bringing guest speakers because we would prefer to go to France, but I don't think that's going to happen. So Ms. Schaefer, who is the French teacher, she has never done that before. So we're, you know, brainstorming, trying to get ideas how we're going to do that. But for Spanish, we have reached out to the music department and to the art department. So together, we're trying to get Bobby Sanabria and his quartet coming back to Pearson for a master class where students can be hands-on. Bobby Sanabria is Puerto Rican, but he went to Manhattan School of Music and he's very well-known. He's a jazz musician. So it would be terrific for my students to have the opportunity to speak to someone from Puerto Rico. And then, you know, the connections, how, where is the musical aspect and the performing part of his career and his success? So, yeah, that's basically what I have. Thank you.
Slide done.
Hi, everyone. I'm back. The, the History Department has a lot of work to do. We've been aware that the Regents is, we're shifting. The new framework is into place. And this year, sophomores are going to be taking the new, next-gen Regents that has the new framework. They're also going to be taking the Transition Regents as well. And then they'll have the option of choosing their best score. So that's kind of where we are. And then it's going to move up next year to US History. I'll go over that in a minute. So we have been busy. We really, our focus is on blending our skills to meet both the next-gen rollout and the goals for IB History. And there is some new, there are pieces that are very congruent and work together well. And we want to push them anyway. So that's kind of what we've been focusing on since last year as well. Coming up with rubrics for writing. We want to, we've been focusing on those shifts, but pushing them into our daily lessons. So we've been looking at the skill shifts, new resources, reviewing our current program and trying to mirror those skills to look at what IB is looking for as well as the new Regents. So on a daily basis, we're implementing stimulus-supported content. So they're constantly being, they start their, their days looking at documents and different sources and looking at, I'll explain a little bit, but in what the Regents is looking at is having students now examine the validity of sources, their point of view, their perspective, their bias, where, what might the purpose of the speaker be looking at? Because that all then informs the reader or the learner as to the, you know, how we can weigh the value of witness testimony, right? So it's very interesting, especially today in a world where kids are growing up in a local and global environment. That's what we're looking for. The other piece that we're looking at is Jen mentioned, Ms. Bianchi, the Enduring Issues Essay. So it's a shift away from the DBQ, which really doesn't expect students to do much more than reiterate what's in a document. And, you know, the, the best students might put some analysis in and it really hasn't been expecting our students to do much. So this is different. And students are going to have to assess sources for a theme that they come up with themselves. So the seventh grade just finished their Enduring Issues project and they're going to move into another one. And down at the bottom there, we're going to, and by the way, the ninth grade English and History teachers, Ms. Bianchi and Mr. McGovern have collaborated on a tolerance project, which they've done in the past, but now they've shifted it to be geared towards looking at it from the enduring issues perspective. So it's all, it's all good. The historical essay-writing piece is very important for us. I pull my IB seniors in now on a regular basis and ask them to give me feedback of what I should be doing with the seventh graders. So immediately, they just finished their big research paper and they said, get them used to using the new tools. So our next project is working with our online databases, coming up with our own sources based on a theme that they choose themselves. I'll give them a topic so it's relevant to the content. And then they'll have to weave it together using these rubrics that are congruent with IB and the next-gen stuff. So this is just the timeline. It's very similar to what you've heard tonight, but we're rolling out, the transition's been in place since 2018. And this year, in 2020, we're going to implement the next, the new Regents. And students will be able to choose the best score. Then in next year, in 2021's US History, we will roll out the Transition Regents for that and say goodbye to, you know, the, the DBQ. And they'll have much less multiple choice based on stimulus and they'll have one thematic essay. I think that's good enough for now because I'm going to talk.
Yeah, so I'm going to have Ms. White Dunn talk about Plant as well, which we're going to move on to. Sorry. As we know, our goal number C under two was continuing to expand and implement our Plant program. For those of you who don't know it, it's our alternative to the IB Middle Years Program, which we created a think tank of teachers and put them together. And they created this amazing program for our sixth and seventh graders right now. And we're implementing it into the eighth grade come next year. So right now, our sixth graders have Plant One every other day, alternating with either art or PE or music. And then our seventh graders currently have Ms. White Dunn in Plant Two. They meet alternating Home and Careers every other day. But as we know, Home and Careers in seventh grade is a semester. So they have it every other day in a semester base. In eighth grade, we're working on compromising with faculty and staff to figure out a perfect place to put it into the schedule. We're already talking to the eighth grade teachers on interdisciplinary work and having, and weaving it also into the curriculum and making sure it's part of our tenants of what we do every day. And the Plant Three focus, which I know Ms. Westhoff is supposed to be talking about it, but I sent her home because she got the Pearson plague that every middle school child almost had, was supposed to talk about, but she's talked to you about it before, which is that culminating project. And its curriculum focuses research skills, writing, critical thinking, study skills, community building. The main objective for Plant, which we all decided was the four Cs. Communication, creativity, critical thinking, and what am I forgetting? Because, community building, but collaboration. Thank you. See? It's brain fog. We all have it after a long day. And we're going to continue with that. So in Plant Two, Ms. White Dunn is going to explain what she's implemented this year.
Good, thank you. All right. So I call it my thinking lab. And that's where I get to have fun challenging what students think they know and how they know what they know. So as you know, middle school students love to voice their opinions and it's really fun to, to build on that energy. But I kind of have control over funneling them down different ways. So we've, I've geared the activities to challenge those preconceived ideas about ways of knowing and reflecting on how this affects us at our level here, but also on the global scale because that's the ultimate goal, right? Is that we're trying to create these kids that are going to grow up and be kind and passionate and respectful and principled and curious, all those IB learner profile attributes. And of course, IB approaches it that way as well, is that there isn't one way of knowing what we know and that we all learn different way, through different ways. And that students are aware that, you know, everything that they had thought of before is the only way of knowing. It's what we hear and what we see and what we read and what we write about. But there's so much more than just that. So of course, the IB learner profile is a key component to this. So they have to understand what those attributes are and we kind of explore those. So what is it to be principled? What is it to be reflective, resilient, knowledgeable, thinker, open-minded, all of these things? And then my lab activities are kind of based around that profile. And that's what this, that my students come up with their criteria for when we have our projects and activities. They define what the criteria is ahead of time based on what we all learn, you know, is for the ideal learner. So the learning strategies are inquiry and investigative in nature. And each unit includes all of those skills that Brittany was mentioning before. There's an element of team building. Communication is key because that's also part of the IB learner profile. Communication isn't just how we speak. It's our gestures. It's how we gain attention. And we, we work on those different things, local and global awareness. And a final reflective opportunity to hone in on that metacognition because they really need to then reflect and say, well, what are my weaknesses? What are my strengths? What do I want to, how do I want to be better? And what do I want to focus on as I move towards high school and beyond? Okay. So these are just some of the kind of fun activities that we did. But I really wanted them to validate their evidence. So as, they're very, you know, they like to argue. They like to debate. And that's great. So we kind of use that energy. But the evidence is so key to everything that we do. We, every, it can't be based on opinion or fake news and things like that. So that's what we worked on differentiating. Establishing criteria for student claims is very important to me that they define that criteria before they begin their research, before they begin developing their arguments. So if you're going to talk about significance, what does that mean? Is it the impact on large numbers of people over a long period of time? But the criteria is designed by them. And then, of course, we get into the research and then data analysis so that they can justify their claim and their arguments. And then we do it through solving mysteries at historic crime scenes where I kind of control what evidence is given to them. And if they don't have enough, then what do they need in order to solve the crime or solve the mystery? Are eyewitness accounts, you know, a valid source? And then I challenge it. So I'll give them activities where we look at how language determines what colors we see. And I'll show them something in Africa where they don't have the same words for colors. They actually don't see those colors because of it. Or optical illusions are always fun to do with kids. Or I'll test them and, and they don't know that they're witnessing something, but they are. And then we'll go back later and quiz them on what they see and they miss so much stuff. So we look at that. And debating, we've done, we did two debates and they had to, one was kind of based on where the Plant Three is going, where if they could go back in time and pick historic events and change one thing, and how would that have the greatest impact on the future going ahead? And, you know, they worked in groups to come up with those events that they thought would have the biggest impact if they could change. And then we just finished with who is your hero? And they had to bring it all together in this big, they had to pick who is their most inspirational hero based on the learner profile. And then they came up again with their criteria. And so that's, it's the beginning. This is the first year that we run it. But the students have given me feedback and we'll build on that from there. Any questions?
No, I do have one question. We're not done. Do you want to keep going or do you have a question for Plant Two?
It's just about Plant. It's just about Plant. So if you have more to talk about with Plant, keep going.
Okay. A funny story with Ms. White Dunn talking about eyewitnesses. I had a student in my office tell me, doesn't mean that I'm, I know you saw, had an eyewitness, but it doesn't matter. Ms. White Dunn said there needs to be more evidence. So thank you for that. It was a lovely conversation to have. So I'm glad that we're making argumentative children. So Ms. Westhoff usually presents this because it's her baby. And she apologizes for not being here. But the culminating project for Plant Three is going to be the students working in groups. And the question is, if you had $10,000 to donate however you'd like, what would you do to make the biggest impact? So this is going to also culminate in the interdisciplinary work and work on those enduring issues that we discussed with Next Generation. See how it all comes together. There is a method to everyone's madness. So what if you had to come to an agreement about how to split it with the people sitting next to you? So this is going to be their question in their group. So Plant Three is all based on this throughout the year and then a culminating dissertation. So they're going to be applying these research skills that they got in the Plant One and Plant Two courses and their communication skills, just as Ms. White Dunn talked about, the necessary for it to be successful in getting their argument placed, but also making sure that their passion project is heard. An emphasis on the enduring issues. So are they going to do a human rights? Are they going to do tolerance? Are they going to do a conflict? Those are the enduring issues that they're going to be discussing, interdisciplinary work. We're already working. Interdisciplinary work, we're already working with the social studies, math teacher Ms. Westhoff, as well as Ms. Farrell, the English teacher, to figure out how to incorporate this within their classes, so it won't just be, yes, they might have an every other day class, however, it's going to happen within the class periods. And then learning how to make a difference, because that's the biggest thing, right? Our children are gonna be the ones that will make a stand and be globally aware and change the world. I know it sounds cheesy, but it's true and we really wanna put those tenants into them. And then writing persuasively, which we know they can communicate persuasively in my office. So, the culminating project will kind, we're figuring this out right now, we don't know how it's actually going to work out, but it's gonna be a poster session. So, like when you have a PhD, you have a dissertation, so the kids are gonna be in their groups, but each one of them has their own perspective in how they came about the compromise and what research they did, because they all came out from different angles and different perspectives. So, we're gonna have people go around and ask them questions, just like which causes did the group choose to focus on? What have they learned about these causes? What about these causes made them the most valuable to the group? And right, that's the big one. What steps have they taken to do their part helping this cause? So we're hoping that that $10,000 they can actually raise throughout the year and then donate it to the cause that they want, or at least as much as they can fundraise and give back. And then, how would they divide their $10,000 to do the most impact? Because they might decide, yeah, one group might decide, yes, ours is all going to ARF, we wanna help the animals there. Another group might do, for example, this year, they might go to the Australian wildfires. They also might go to people that are suffering from earthquakes. So it just depends on what their group decides and those questions are going to help them when we do this poster session, which also, as Ms. White Dunn and Ms. Bianchi and any IB teacher can tell you, when they do their assessments in IB, that's exactly what they're getting. They're getting questioning just like that to defend their process. So now we're done and you can ask a question.
Thank you. Well, we put great stuff today. The Plant program is, just seems to be so impactful and it's really impressive. I was wondering that when we, you know, several years ago, when we had that kind of debate about do we add the Middle Years Program for IB or do we just try to institutionalize the, the great tenants of it, but, but make it our own and make it even more valuable? The, you know, the upper levels, 11th to 12th grade, and then I think the Middle Years was, wasn't it like six to, six through 10?
Yes.
So I was just wondering if there'd been any discussions of looking at Plant and spiraling that up to nine and 10 as well? And I asked that kind of, you know, knowing that we have packed schedules already, so I don't know if it's, if, if that is already being institutionalized in the other classes they're taking, but it just seems like some of the, the more provocative approaches here in a good way, I, I don't know if, if that's, if that is being, what's necessarily leveraged in nine and 10. And I'm wondering, do we have a gap from Plant to when they get to the traditional IB program?
I know Mr.-
Does that make sense?
Yep, I know Mr. Guinan's co-teaching the Minded Meaning class with Mr. Solo, which is bringing it to the 10th graders who opted in for that, and then I think it's a discussion between us all and now we're gonna move forward. We're open and we're-
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that I have an answer, I'm just thinking that, you know, we, we're institutionalizing this now and it seems like it's just continuing to blossom, but it just seems like we'll have a gap there, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's directly dependent on the extent to which the habits of mind are emphasized by the teachers in grades nine and 10 that are congruent with what happens in IB. And I think a lot of that happens naturally when you have IB teachers teaching the younger grades. You know, you heard tonight about Ms. Bianchi and Mr. McGovern collaborate in, in ninth grade, they're both IB teachers.
Right.
So, but to your point, I think that, you know, there's still room to improve and to perhaps formalize it. The question is, how does it fit in?
Right.
Right.
I think one of the things that I certainly appreciated after hearing everybody's is listening to both the integration of the multiple disciplines working together. I, quite frankly, I'm sitting here feeling very fortunate that my kids go to school here right now. I just know that that's really rare and so I wanna congratulate the faculty on working hard to make that happen. The other thing that I was pleased to hear is it, it kinda sounds like from the multiple disciplines that the next gen standards are kind of coming in with where IB has been for a while, which is nice as well. So it seems like, you know, we're kinda getting on board, which is great. I know that, Mr. Nichols, you had mentioned that this fall IB is overhauling their math curriculum. Do we, do we have any more information on what that looks like?
We do. So it looks as though there's gonna be two strands, the math analysis and the math applications, and that's gonna replace what used to be known as math standard levels and math studies. And there's been a lot of discussions, really Mr. Guinan's taking the lead on this, so I'll turn it over to him in a second, but there's been a lot of discussion about how the applications course can work in concert with Algebra II and the extent to which we might be able to co-seed those. And then additionally, the extent to which in the analysis course, we can co-seed with Calc AB in the senior year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
So the, the Math SL was historically the course that juniors took who were accelerated in math and who had done well in Algebra II and wanted to stay on a pure math track. The Math Studies course was an easier math course that students who wanted to do the diploma could take that course and still earn a math credit towards their diploma's requirements. It was an interesting course that basically, well, it still is, we're teaching it this year, that basically uses two foundational statistical functions and works off of those in real-world application. So mathematically, it was not very rigorous. The applications course that IB is introducing is going to be more rigorous. So I've worked with Chase and we've networked around and it looks like what makes the most sense for us, a lot of IB schools are doing different things, but what makes most sense for us is consistent logically with the IB recommendations, that we make it a two-year course and we find ways to integrate Algebra II into the course. That way, students who weren't accelerated can access the Algebra II content in that course and students who didn't do well in Algebra II who already took it would have that content reinforced through the two-year sequence. Then we're looking at taking the Math SL course and making it a two-year course as well and integrating into it AP, AB calculus. We'll talk more about that, though, I think.
The most, the most challenging part to wrap your head around for me is, and feel free to weigh in, Chase, is having kids who've taken Algebra II already sitting in the same class with kids who've never taken Algebra II. That's going to be an interesting concept, but we're making the assumption that the people who don't go for the math analysis course really did not achieve at a very high level in Algebra II and would benefit, as Mike said, from revisiting the material.
Because we know that success in Algebra II leads to greater success in college specifically, not just in math, but in, in math-related fields such as statistics and other math application skills.
Chase, do you wanna weigh in?
No, I, I think, you know, we're currently, we have students in our IB courses in the lower course, the one that is called Math Studies right now, that have taken Algebra II ahead of time. We have some students in that course that have not taken Algebra II. It's very working to have both dynamics in the course. And I think the fact that this course is gonna be a little bit more challenging, if anything, will make it even easier to kind of mesh those two models, or the two pathways that students arrived in that course. So it's not something I'm overly concerned about, although it'll take some planning on the part of our teachers.
And then are you thinking regions at the end of the second year or like somewhere within that?
We have the option of the January and then if, if necessary, at the end of the year.
The January is somewhat problematic to the extent that it's late in the game for a lot of kids to take that regions, January of their senior year, but it's, it's not the regions that they need to graduate. It's tied to the regions with advanced designation.
Thank you.
All right, so wellness, shifting gears, that is very loud. So, in middle high school, we had our, in our goals, vaping and social media. We know this to be a struggle, this is what every, I think, middle school parent comes to be concerned about, especially coming from the elementary. So for vaping, we're working closely with HUGS. We were supposed to implement some stuff in the fall, however, the SAFE Coordinator, which is our direct contact with HUGS, unexpectedly decided not to work there anymore, so now we're working with the new one, Marina, who we just met over via email. And I've been talking closely with Kim Laubie, who's the executive director of HUGS. We did some stuff during Red Ribbon Week, six through 12, as well as some interdisciplinary lessons and content classes. For example, Mr. Malia did a great data lesson regarding what the effects of vaping are and such. And then for social media, as you know, the cell phone policy is a great thing in the middle school, they're doing really well with it. Doesn't mean that they're not using them in bathrooms and trying to hide, we're not that dumb. So there are some interdisciplinary lessons, I believe, six through eight that are going on, as well as in the health courses. And then Plant, obviously, in Plant One, you talk about digital citizenship as one of the actual units of study. And then there's been guest speakers, movies, and as I said, interdisciplinary work. And then Mr. Guinan's gonna talk about self-deflection.
Before this too, I mean, one of the great benefits of being a small learning community is that we have a lot of interactions with the students and in terms of vaping and social media, we have a lot of touchpoints to provide them guidance, one-to-one, which I find to be most impactful. As part of our partnership with IB, we have a cyclical review. It's more of a self-assessment that we submit to them, part of our continuous ongoing learning and metacognitive development. So assessment is woven into all aspects, including that of the program. So IB asks us to take a step back and look at our program very deeply every five years, so in the sixth year, we did it, looking at their standards and practices. Basically, we look at three different aspects of the program. The driving philosophy, how we structure our organization to deliver the program and support it, and then the curriculum instruction that is its core. So we, it really is a huge questionnaire with thousands of questions. Two of the critical components that we employed to gather data to inform the self-assessment were, one, on Superintendent's Conference Day, I had all of the IB teachers in the afternoon and I took a sampling mostly from the philosophy and curriculum instruction sections and had them work in subject groups to fill out their response to those questions. So they were able to talk about it, give themselves a ranking and provide some narrative that helped inform my filling out of the self-assessment. We also did a small survey of parents who either had students who were IB diploma students or students who took an IB class, either current ones or former ones, and we got great data there and insights into what their experiences were that helped inform our self-assessment. Now, IB, for some schools, they will decide to come and visit to do an evaluation to complement self-assessment, but lately, I think that hasn't been the case for most of the schools. It used to be something they were able to do for every school, but I think they've hit a scale now where that is impossible for them. So we may be chosen for that and we would welcome that. It would be at our district's expense, but we'll, we'll run that if we have that opportunity, which it would be a great opportunity to have their folks come in and kick our tires and look under the hood as well and give us feedback that we could use to continue to develop the program. And diverse and inclusive community. So one of the things that, oh, oh, please, Betty, I didn't realize I was here.
What we're gonna say.
I was gonna say we have Dr. Robinson back on Superintendent Conference Day. He was here this summer and he had another session with the teachers that was very enlightening. Some of the other things we're doing are classroom libraries at John Germain Library, a diverse film series.
That was great. I appreciate that. Mr. Guinan was spot on, that was perfect. Thank you for that introduction. So diversity and inclusion was born from our parent committee, Health and Wellness, and the Board of Education decided us, decided to make us a freestanding committee and I appreciate that, we've been doing great. I am happy to report that we are meeting our goals and membership is actually up. We started out with about 13 members and I believe we're up to about 26 now. Granted, not everybody attends the meetings, but they are getting the minutes, they're getting the agenda and they are chiming in and attending when they can, so that's been very positive. As Mr. Guinan mentioned, our Superintendent Conference Day this year was Dr. Oliver Robinson, who was Superintendent of the Year. He spoke about a contemplative journey and being authentic, authentic difference makers. And by that, something he spoke about often, he quoted, was fashioning our story. So it's really the idea that we have more in common than one might think and it's really important to share our stories with others so that we can find that commonality. And it also brought us to thinking about our own journey and how we got to where we were, thinking about a thought journey and how we base our decisions. There were two breakout sessions. The first was identifying hidden bias, hidden barriers to inclusion, and then the idea of having courageous conversations. A subcommittee to our diversity and inclusion is Classroom Libraries. We actually meet once a month as a subcommittee, one of our subcommittee members with Classroom Libraries here, Mrs. Cohen. We have distributed a questionnaire, starting at the pre-K to grade five level, just to kind of look at how teachers are selecting the books that are read in class. So at the elementary school level, they actually have their own classroom libraries. So teachers were asked to fill out a questionnaire and think about how they choose those books and also areas that they thought might be missing. We had a great response and from there, and through this questionnaire, we were actually able to secure a grant through a private donor, along with John Germain Library, who has graciously offered two books per class, starting with pre-K to grade five. And we're also going to hopefully extend that to middle high school, sending out a questionnaire and finding out where they feel there might be needs. And this is covering things like LBGtQ issues, same-sex parenting, fragile housing, things along those lines, people with special needs, culturally diverse film series. So that's something, again, that started out as a conversation and then became a subcommittee as well, and we've been having monthly films shown at John Germain Library. Some of the films that we covered, the first was Misrepresentation, which was how women are portrayed in the media. We had a student panel for that and probably about 20 participants who attended, a Sunday afternoon event. We showed the film He Names Me Malala and the guest speaker for that film was actually the photographer who traveled with Malala. She was actually there when she was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize, so she spoke about that. This month, the film is Loving and it's the conversation of interracial marriage and the Supreme Court decision that overturned that. That's on February 9th from 2:00 to 4:30. And then the last is on professional development. So right now, we're working with the PTA to look at some programs based on social, emotional learning, just ideas on how we could have those conversations in class with things related to bullying, dealing with confrontation and delicate issues that might come up on the day-to-day in children's lives. The last one, resource allocation, is something that Dr. Mears had spoken to me about and it's the idea of resources and after-school programs.
Right. So I guess we're, we're looking at how, answering the question, how do we leverage resources to provide reallocation to support inclusive access to after-school activities? So part of that is using some grant funding. And so although all the other bullets are really kind of focused on that committee work, which is amazing work and I love that and I can't wait to see more of it, we're also looking at how we can create access to after-school activities. And there's this whole bucket of equitable access, then there's some specificity to it. So one really small- So one really small piece of that is being able to fund one-to-one aid so students who need some adult support to access that could do that, and without having to bring a parent. So at the age of spending, starting to get older, they don't want to bring a parent to an after-school activity, we're able to provide some indirect adult support where it doesn't look like the student's being stigmatized and they have that access. And we've had some students take advantage of that at elementary school and at the high school, middle school level.
Thank you. That is the end of my slide. Are there any questions?
Just one last one on the E. Is one of the considerations to access to after-school activities, the transportation piece? Because if they don't have a bus to take home, then...
Yeah, we're looking into that. That's a conversation Dr. Mears and I are exploring. It's a real issue in terms of access, and when you think about equity and having the opportunities available to all, it really needs to be an even playing field. So we are looking at that.
Small steps, and then we look at the larger picture and how do we make that happen? And how do we leverage resources to do that?
Can I add something to Betty's sentence?
Hi.
Hi, I'm Bobby Cohen. I'm the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And it was great being at this particular board meeting and hearing so much of what's being done, and especially what is in alignment with the Diversity and Inclusion Committee's goals. And just one thing that I want to be on record and for any teachers who are still here to know is that one of the reasons why we developed subcommittees of the main committee is because not every teacher can get to a meeting that's held at four o'clock after the work, that they need to get home, or they need to go coach, or whatever. So these subcommittees are very flexible as to when we meet. We'd be happy to have the meetings be on any of the campuses during the teacher's lunch hour, make it a working lunch meeting, and I just want the teachers to know that. And also, just keep up the good work. I'm really inspired by what I heard here tonight.
Thank you.
Can I just make an overall request? Because we've heard so many, it's wonderful to spend some quality time hearing about our educational programs because so much of the past year and a half has been about building and budgets and other things and not about what they kind of, what I consider more than meat and potatoes, but why we're all here, right? As we do, we're gonna start the budgeting process in our first presentation of the next meeting. What I would request is, I'm assuming the administrators will be presenting their budgets, is it would be helpful to tie in to some of the new initiatives if they have costs associated so that not only the board, but the community can understand why those investments are really valuable. And so we can just tie them back to, because we heard some great stuff today, but if we could link the two, then there could be a deeper understanding of how we're making the investments wise, wisely.
And that's why we thought in designing the plan to have this opportunity to talk about the wonderful programs and the direction we're going in so that when everybody presents their budget, you can see it related to why they're focusing the resources in certain areas.
Okay, well, that was fantastic. Thank you, everybody who put everything together for that. So I think we can move on unless there was more. So going to policy.
Yeah, sure. So I had mentioned for the last board meeting that we were going to look into replacing the policy manual and pretty much starting over. And I was able to do that, called Erie One Bosse's, and there will be no additional associated cost to do that, so that's good news for us. Basically, what will happen is a first draft will be submitted to us for review. That will be provided with direction, so we can either replace, edit, or update with prior policies with board approval. So after we approve that first draft, we'll set that the committee has already started setting criteria for, you know, substituting. So recent, like if we are approving policies, there's policies on the agenda tonight, we just pick those out and we resubmit them on the first draft. After that, it goes back. It's all kind of put together. As we're moving through this process, Erie One Bosse's will take note of any changes or updates as we're going through the process and include them in the next revision if needed. It comes back to a second draft until we have our final policy manual. I just want to let folks know, and caution folks, when I talked with our contact at Erie One Bosse's, this could be up to a two-year process. So we want to make sure that we do this thorough, we get it done. And then after that, the big question is, how do the policy updates happen after that? How do we keep this current? And right now, there's three ways that Bosse's provides those updates. One is something called a policy pulse, which is open to any district. They send out a policy pulse, and that's how they pick, you know, folks picked up their preregistration one. It's policies of interest. It's no cost. The other one is quarterly updates, where it's generally every quarter, they send you the updates, and it's on you to figure out whether or not you want to accept, reject, or update your policy. What we have is the kind of the premium plan from my language, and it's the annual update. And we've been calling it the audits. We've been referring to this fourteen-fifteen audit. And every year, you get the full year's worth of updates. And then it's great because then you can set your committee agenda for the full year. And but the key feature of that pathway is that you stay current with that. So if you don't complete the audit, Bosse's will not send you the next year's annual review. Does that make sense? So you have to stay up. So what I'm proposing is if, once we move forward and we replace the manual, I just want folks to know the time commitment to do that and the thoroughness in which we need to address it. And then also that I'd like to put into the charter the way we should update the policy manual. So if there's any new chairperson for the subcommittee or the board ever needs to reflect on how we maintain it, it's right there in the charter for the board policy committee, so there's, and there's the whole process. Included with that, I think we want to amend the charter to give examples on how we get the policy from board approval into the manual. And that process won't name names, it will name positions on how that works. So we had flush that out in the beginning of the committee meeting. This way, you're staying current, you have an updated manual. The number of changes that occurred over the years is just too substantial for the work. It would take, it would be a multi-year process for us to keep the manual we currently have and go back and try and get all those quarterly updates. So I think we have a great direction, and I'm open to receiving feedback to bring back to the committee.
Sounds great. Thank you. Is there anything you need from the board?
I've just been, you know, when we're moving policies forward, just your input. So we have two policies on the agenda now. We're probably gonna also bring the charter for an amendment for your approval, just to include that process. And then we'll keep you abreast of the next step. So thank you for your support. You've been all supportive, and your continued support will be helpful. So nothing specific.
Add to that, in addition to the policy manual and procedures, there's an associated procedure for all the administrative regulations to how to carry out the policies. So it's quite extensive, but ultimately, we will give you the what and the how.
Great.
Thank you. Sounds great.
Thank you so much for your leadership on this. I know it took just this long just to figure out what the plan was gonna be. So I understand it's a lot of work.
Well, thank you, and my acknowledgement goes to the full committee and the clerical folks who support us, Victoria Handy, Gina Demopolis, and Kristen Duran, and Joan Dunn.
Are there any other committee updates? I know we've got policy to do just from diversity and inclusion.
The Transportation Committee met this week, and we're kind of formulating a plan with regard to the safer to school. If you recall, we had gotten the green light from the board to see if that's the direction we wanted to go. And so the bulk of the time was thinking about process, how to move forward to figure out what the needs are. And I think ultimately, we're logistically figuring out, like, a few phases. And once we get some of that formalized, we'll present to the board. The other thing that I wanted to share is that in the fall, as liaison with the village, the mayor had given my contact information to a couple of gentlemen that wanted to pursue a, like a shuttle-type situation. And I told them I'm just one board member, but, you know, right now I've got more questions than answers. And so I reached out to Mr. Malone, who's on the Transportation Committee with me, because at the time, we were in the transitional period with Katie and Ellie, to figure out, is this something that's feasible? What would the concerns be? What's the liabilities? Like, what's the process of moving forward with that? And he reached out to council and our insurance carrier. And we're still figuring out what we don't know right now. But as soon as we kind of have some answers to some preliminary questions, then we'll bring that to the board for a fuller conversation. I just wanted to share where we were in that process. We don't have any answers right now, so that's why we haven't done like a presentation, and I haven't asked to put it on the agenda because we don't know what we don't know right now. So we're still in best of late.
Thank you for exploring it, and it's helpful. I was, I think I was a little concerned when I read the newspaper because it would lead one to believe that we're far along in our discussions with this vendor, and they seem to at least communicate to the press, unless they were misquoted, that it looks likely that we're gonna be, they're gonna be working with us. So I think it's important to make sure that we manage their expectations. They may, you know, because they may think that we're gonna be doing a deal, and when you come back to us in two weeks or a month or whatever, we may have to have a series of conversations and may end up not doing it. So, you know, I think it's just important to be as transparent as possible. And if they need a decision sooner, then either our timeline has to be faster or they have to find a different dance partner.
They were looking at August, and they had looked at Haven Speech, our parking lots, that sort of thing. Their concern with Haven Speech was that it was dark. Our parking lots are not dark. And the other thinking was that it would only be for August, which is kind of our quiet season, is why they felt like we might be a good partner. So it's definitely not like a long-term thing. It's just when, in the summer, the parking in the village is so tight that people literally come to enjoy our village and can't stay because they can't find parking and end up leaving. So business owners in town have seen that, and then when the movie theater opens, there's some anticipation that that one might get worse. And so they're just kind of forward-thinking and reaching out to potential partners. And we gotta do our due diligence on what that might look like.
Sounds good.
Any other committee updates?
I just wanted to mention that I don't know if we are actually complying with our charters because I don't know if all our committees have been meeting with what the charters prescribe. So I think we just have to really take a look at that and make sure that we are because it seems to be spotty, unless a lot of things are just not getting up online. So maybe we've had meetings with some of these committees, and there's just been nothing posted about it. But I haven't seen a year like this where it just seems like there are committees where it's just, it's ready to sign. So I don't know what the process is to kind of reflect on that and just make sure we're complying or we discuss changing the charters if we think it's the right thing to do.
I mean, I guess if folks want, we could have a more robust committee update at a later meeting where every chair of the committee can update what they're, what an effect, how often they're meeting and stuff like that.
Is our committee in particular, you're concerned?
Or you know what, or we can just get, we can, you know, an email's fine. I don't think you need to have time on it, but just even going through, there is somewhere, we hear there are meetings for two months, goodbye, and there's no minutes. Or, I mean, I just looked up the athletic committee, there's nothing for the entire year on that page. So maybe they've met five times. I have no idea. I look at tho, I go to those periodically, all of them, and read the minutes because I think that sometimes we get updates that are briefer than others, or they've had two meetings and we just get a headline. So, but when I go and I see, and I'm just using that as an example, that there's nothing at all, maybe they haven't met. So, and the charter requires certain things in that committee. So I'm just saying that we want to be in compliance with our, with our charters, and the committees are set up because they're supposed to reflect work that needs to get done. So, that's it.
Any other committee updates? Nope. Moving on.
Can I ask that everybody refresh?
Sure. All right, so moving on to policy items. So we have the first read of the student voter registration and preregistration, and we have the first read of the fundraising policy. Given how late it is, I mean, I think it's a first read, so if there are any issues that you want to discuss now, but I don't think we need to kind of go into huge depth.
These will be posted for the public to see, so if they want to come back for the second read to give us input, they can, right?
Yep, they're both under public.
Okay, great.
Yep, and I think you'll see that the one change to the, that was recommended to the student voter registration and preregistration policy by the policy committee was based on your comment last board meeting, Chris. Just get rid of the automatic function that no one would be, have responsibility for. Okay, so first read, consider, do we need to vote on accepting the first read, do we? We do, okay. Can I get a motion to accept the first read of the student voter registration and preregistration policy? So moved.
Second.
Get a motion to approve the first read of the fundraising policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Since we're not going to discuss it like now, the change, the material change that was made, if we can review it in the second one, just so that you folks are not about to go.
Can I get a motion to approve item seven point one through seven point eleven?
So moved.
Second.
All right, action item eight point one. Can I get a motion to approve the appropriation from the insurance reserve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? That's unanimous. I get a motion to approve action item eight point two to increase the voter-approved budget for the amount of uninsured property loss.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Can we just get a brief explanation of this, please?
Mine.
All right, the twenty-two thousand, twenty thousand of it is for the cyber-related incident, and we have to pay for it, so we have to increase the budget to go and do that. We are gonna use the insurance reserve to go and fund it. The two thousand is for the bus accident, and the two thousand dollars is our deductible on that. Later on, when we get our receipts from the insurance company, we're also going to go and increase the budget again so that we can pay our vendor for doing the work related to the cyber and also purchasing a vehicle to replace the one that was lost. And we might need to go into management reserve or fund balance if there's any difference between what we receive, all right, and what we need to pay for the bus.
Okay. Thank you. I get a motion to approve item eight point three to accept the District Treasurer's report for October 2019.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right, did you know?
Not yet. We've seen that we're still paying the school for parking spaces, we're not using...
It's unanimous. So for item eight point four, Mr. Nichols, are you asking us to discuss one of the two options? Or are we going to approve them both, then decide, and you got, you would decide which one makes more sense?
Well, typically, we have a, we have a policy that prohibits students and teachers from missing two, more than two days in or out of break. And in the past, what's happened is when Italy, the Italy advisor, for instance, wants to take three days, they come and present to the board with the cost differential, and then the board weighs in. But I'm happy doing it the other way as well, if you want me to decide.
What would you prefer?
I'll decide.
Can I say, can I ask a question about this trip?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I know that this has been a really, we hear great feedback about this trip and it's very valuable. People here Hawaii just think they're all just surfing, but this is really a science-based trip and experiential. I'm just curious, it seems really late. I know, and I just looked back because four years ago, my own kid went and we got emails in October. The board, it was discussed in the fall. There was fundraising starting in the fall. This is like, I don't know, you know, a couple of months out, ten weeks out. So it just seems late to afford for fundraising and families to save for it. So I just was curious as why, it just seems unusually late this year.
The only thing I could point to is that the trip leader is different. So in the past, the trip leader was Dr. Schumacher and now the trip leader is Mr. Rude. And so I think the timing is probably a little different. If you recall, Mr. Rude was also the advisor who brought forth the plan to go to Australia as well.
So I just think it's always good to provide families with enough time to fundraise and plan. Because it's a, forty-four hundred dollars is a lot of money for one kid to take a vacation.
Yeah, it is. I'll share those, I'll share those concerns with them.
Can I get a motion to approve action item eight point four with both resolutions? And then Mr. Nichols can decide which one makes more sense.
Does it need to say that it will be up to the decision of the principal in the resolution?
I mean, I, I thought I was saying it now, but, so I think it'd be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, alright.
Is there a motion?
Oh, sumo.
No, come on. Oh, sumo.
Nice.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No. That's unanimous.
I get a motion to approve action item eight point five to appoint Mr. Malia as a special education math teacher for an additional point to full-time equivalent.
Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't know what to say. Yeah, the, there was a teacher who was on leave and therefore the administrators looked at how the best need, because special education math certification is not easy to come by. And so they redone the assignment of the teachers and asked Mr. Malia to absorb one of those classes.
Are you doing so he loses a prep period?
Uh, this is, would be an additional, and, and when teachers teach an additional period, they get, of course, you know, the equivalent pay for it.
That's unanimous.
Alright, can we get a motion to approve action item eight point six to appoint the medical inspector? And since the resolution was executive content, just to read the full resolution, it's be resolved that pursuant to section nine thirteen of the education law, the employee named in the executive session referred to as employee A is hereby directed to appear for a medical examination in the office of the doctor named in executive session and referred to as Doctor A. And it is further resolved that Doctor A is hereby appointed school medical inspector presented to section nine thirteen of the education law in order to evaluate said employee's ability to perform his or her employment duties.
Sumo. Second.
Any discussion?
That's unanimous.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business?
Just in terms of the follow-up, we had a Mrs. Grossman came regarding a plaque that was in the athletic room. I didn't know if there's any follow-up on that, if they found it or if they were still at the place. I guess the request was to place it in Mr. Malone's building, so.
It was, I could speak to it briefly.
I don't know if we, just as an update.
Yeah, we, we actually did, we looked through the elementary school as well as we looked around the high school.
Yeah, I talked to the custodians and we looked throughout the building as well. No one's seen it for a number of years.
Yeah.
Do you want to take any board?
I would, I would take, I would put a motion out there to recreate the plaque and put it up at the discretion of Mr. Malone in terms of, they wanted to put it in the elementary school somewhere, whatever's convenient.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that further.
Yeah.
I, I don't know exactly what, how the plaque had read. I mean, I'll, I'm happy to do what I can to find out.
I think, um,
Yeah, we can get that from Mrs. Grossman.
Mr. Grossman had proposed a,
A different?
A different thing on the, to be on the plaque, so maybe.
Alright.
So maybe next episode, it's for, it's for there to be a proposal for us to approve.
If it can, wouldn't mind that.
And then, and then I think it's just worth staying, stating that we've had two requests for plaques. I feel like if we go down this route, we might get a lot more. And I think you, you got a preliminary estimate for the cost of the,
Yes.
the plaque to come in here, which is like three thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, a little bit less for the actual creation of the plaque and then if, possibly an additional charge for removal and actually mounting.
So what was the seven fifty? If we put a brand on?
Would, that would be for the actual removal and replacement.
Oh, just, oh, okay.
Because the people who create it don't actually install.
So the actual cost is thirty-five hundred or something and then seven fifty, the installation, basically?
Yeah, and it might be, it might be less than the thirty-five hundred.
Is that for the, the one in the high school hall?
Yes.
Separated from this one?
Yes.
This one is replacing one that was removed during renovation and then went lost.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's just important that everybody know, these are two plaques that already existed. One we're replacing and then the other one we can't find. And it's not,
They're not new.
It's not go plaque hack.
Well, is that something that, Paul, that you guys could do?
I would have to look into it.
Maybe just let us know because if that's something you could take down and put up, that would be helpful to know for us.
Go back to you.
Thanks.
Any other items not scheduled that I didn't want to talk about?
Well, I think under unfinished business, the last meeting when we got an update from IBI made a request and I thought we got a yes or we're gonna get another update from them at this meeting. And we talked about getting updates at every meeting until the project was finished. So are they?
Yeah, we can call them if they're available.
Does anyone else want to get an update from them? I think it'd be good for the public to. I know we got an email with an updated schedule that hasn't been shared to the public, so we should share that as well. So I think that's under unfinished business versus new business, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we can get an update and then, I mean, I would like to do another walkthrough the way we did it back in the fall, just to see where we are, just what we get like.
Well, I, I think we also have an exec and Tom's waiting up for us as well. So I think we should probably prioritize how we're gonna spend the rest of the evening because it's ten o'clock.
I told Tom to go to bed.
Did you?
Well, you know, I, I think the public, the schedule has changed. I think the public deserves to get that information now and not wait two weeks to find out that another date's been missed and there's new dates.
Okay, we can try to, We actually, if you liked to now, we actually could give a brief update on the information that IBI actually shared with us. Paul?
Do you wanna get them on the phone or?
You have preferred either a, a written summary or would you like to speak with them on the phone? What's your preference?
Whatever you think is gonna be most efficient in time, as, as long as the accurate information's communicated. If you don't need them on the phone.
That's the problem, getting accurate information, so.
From them, yeah, I mean, they're from, they tend to take a long time not to answer our questions. So I don't know if that's a waste of time, but if you feel like you have enough information to provide the, the update without them, then go for it.
We have the information that they provided in summary form.
Okay.
Paul?
Okay, quick update on the CIGAR Learning Center. Well, this, this is a schedule that's been given to you guys, um, the last board meeting, but so far, we're pretty much current with what they said. The building schedule from January twentieth to February twenty-ninth. The ongoing effort to finish the work is proceeding. Hopefully, everything's finished by March first. Through March thirty-first, architect engineers, the punch list review. Contractor effort to complete punch list fire inspection and final cleaning sys, systems programming can occur at this time. Please note, schedules above are pending, agency reviews and approvals, because they're subject to fire inspection, self-cannings, water showing up to do what they have to do. The retaining wall schedule. January twentieth through February first, we're finalizing the bid documents. February third through February twentieth, the advertisement and public bidding of the project will go out. February twenty-seventh, the award of the project by the Board of Ed. February twenty eighth through March twentieth, construction administration, that's the old paperwork part of it. March twenty-first through May twenty-ninth, construction and substantial completion. All goes well.
The, yeah, thank you so much. We got, just, you know, the board got these updated dates on the seventeenth, which was after the last board meeting. That's why I wanted to go over it. Because that was new, that the construction was, the primary construction was going to the end of, of, end of February and then March, they're using March due to punch list. So it seems like, as of now, they're, they're telling us that besides the wall, the rest of it should be finished by the end of March, right? To the best of our information, that's what we know now? Is that accurate?
They're saying that assuming that all the work with the contract is there, several issues being resolved now is actually completed. So that's their projected time.
And we know that there's so many dates, so we take this with where it comes from.
Exactly.
We did do a walkthrough today. Paul, Mr. Malone and I did go down there and there was a fair amount of work that had been completed.
I'm on-site every day, so I, I see what's being done, what needs still to be done. And, um, the right, the amount of work has really picked up in the last few weeks. And I really truly think we're gonna be on time. I mean, on time as far as what you have recently to be completed. We're really just, I would say in another week, two weeks, we'll be just on punch list items, which is just the small details.
I mean, can we get a more detailed schedule than that? I mean, it's just that first, can you go back to that first page? I mean, that, that's not a sca, that's just meaningless to me. It's an ongoing effort to finish work. It's not a criticism of you at all, but I don't just,
This is applied from IBI.
I understand, but what does that even mean? Ongoing effort to finish work?
Well, what it, what it means is that everything that's left is gonna be in this time period to finish. You know, we're,
It may be more helpful to have a detailed list of,
Well, we're also, you gotta, you gotta realize that we're working with the contractor's schedule as well. They can't probably tell you exactly when they're gonna be here to, to finish up.
When IBI was here for the last meeting, they said that the next two days, they were gonna be assessing everything and figuring out if there are any contractors or subcontractors that are the labor. Elliot or Paul, do you wanna speak a little bit to that, just so that we understand what we're working with?
Well, as of today, I spoke to Ed and he explained to me that they have some kind of workout with Palace to get them back in there to finish up the electrical needs, meaning the lighting and all the odds and endings that still have to be taken care of. They're gonna show up on-site on Wednesday. And once they come back, we'll get our lighting finished and we can close up the ceilings and the leads and move along.
Really? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to see, are there any other critical items? Like I remember the elevator was a big issue that kept the rain coming. Is there anything like this that you foresee like bringing more delays?
Nope. I think the elevator, the only thing left is the flooring to be done, which should be done later this week. All the flooring should be taken care of by the end of this week. That's including with the carpeting being changed over the tile in the nurse's office and a couple mix-ups. The elevator's ready to go. There's no, they're just waiting for, I think, a final inspection and then it'll be turned over to us.
I appreciate you're there every day and I know that, you know, you're doing, you're, you know, you're doing a good job as a watchdog, just trying to push them. And we're dealing with a multitude of sins over there. You know, a while back, we got one of these spreadsheets that listed everything and it was, you know, and the date and where it was. Now we get these lists that say ninety-five percent complete and then sometimes afterwards, they list things that would seem like that's a pretty big deal. So it's kind of hard to compare the two. If they have an updated version of this, obviously the dates, a lot of these dates have changed. I would hope they have an updated version of this spreadsheet because you don't manage construction projects by a logist like this. If they have that, I request that the Board of Education get a copy of it because it is hard to respond to this. I mean, you know, the list that we got last week includes like, you know, wrong floor put in. It doesn't say when the right floor is getting put in. So, you know, I, it, again, it's, and again, you know, there's a lot of completes on here, but, you know, Jim Vestable, flooring incomplete, but it doesn't say when it will be complete. So, so this isn't that,
I can update you on some of those things as we go along.
But, and, and again, I'm not, this is not your list to create, so I don't wanna add that to, you've got so much on your plate. When they provide us with documents, it just shouldn't say not complete yet. It should say, this is when we, we anticipate that it will be done. Otherwise, we, there's nothing to even hold them accountable except that you're late again and again and it's not open. So if we can get that, that would be helpful. My other question for you, because you're doing a lot at once. I mean, you're, you're down there every day, you know, doing our work and it's great and we appreciate it. You're also overseeing the two facilities that are currently open, managing a staff. And do you think it would be helpful, because you're doing a really good job, you think it'd be helpful to have a full-time clerk for the works on-site till it's finished? Because you can't be there all the time because you also have this other big job here to do. So I'm wondering what your, your opinion is. I know there's an additional cost, but I'm just wondering objectively, do you feel like that would be helpful in this process?
That's a tough one. I, I truly believe I could finish it on my own, but, um, I also see where the board would come, where they come from as far as, you know, thinking maybe we need extra help. And I, I would welcome some help. I wouldn't have a problem if the, the board, you know, suggested.
Can we just, on her first question, can we ask IBI for that list that they've given us of everything that's outstanding, to have a specific date for each item, when it's going to be done? Is that?
You can ask them.
Okay, because that's what, like she said, that's what, at one point, we're getting the schedule with a completion date and now we're just getting a list of what's not completed without.
Basically, not done yet, not done yet.
Yeah.
Well, I think that list was generated by IBI as a punch list. And, and the other list earlier was, was from the construction manager.
But can we request that IBI put dates on it?
Absolutely.
Wait, but the, the construction manager was like the clerk for the works and worked, right? And so what I'm saying is in the absence of having, and that person was supposed to be on to complete the project, but the project went so long, he was reassigned to something else at the end of December. So we're kind of missing that function right now. So that kind of is one of the reasons why I'm teeing up, you know, who's gonna provide this to us? Because otherwise, it seems like it's just always a guessing game. And, and you're getting, you're not, you're not getting enough information and we're not getting enough information.
Well, we're working through it, let's put it that way.
So what do people think about, since, you know, if we need that person there to really get enough concrete information, what do you guys think?
I mean, I appreciate the settlement and I think that could potentially be helpful. My concern would be cost, bringing someone like that in and having them get up to speed. And two, I would think we could, if their pay could be tied to how quickly it's finished, I'd hate to bring someone in who might have a financial incentive to delay the project. But if there's a way to bring someone in to help us bring this over the finish line and they're com, try to, you know, limit how much we're to spend on that as much as possible, but also it seems to me the only way it's gonna work is if, if we tied their compensation.
Success fee or something like that.
Yeah, to a completion date.
To the incentive to get it.
Yeah.
I, I could go either way. I'm reluctant. I'm on the fence. I think I could be talked into it, but I, quite frankly, I'm, I'm more concerned about throwing more good money after bad when we're so close to the finish line here. And if, if our administrators are telling us that we're nearing the bend of completion, by the time we find somebody, get them up to speed, what weight are they gonna have to do anything different than what we're doing other than like keep going, keep going, keep going? Because, I mean, without any sort of authority or, or incentive for them to have any say, I don't, I don't know if that would be effective. So I think I'm, with your goes, maybe another walkthrough with the board to see how far we're going. how far we are-
That's what I was just gonna suggest, that with a walk-through, then you can really see for your own eyes where we're at.
Yeah, so if we're super close, then the board might feel like, oh, you know, maybe a clerk of the works sees it, look how close we are, we just need to just push this through, we're almost done, or if we see that it's, um, nerve-wracking, we might feel differently, so.
I mean, my, my thought is, you know, it would be great to have someone dedicated to really wrap this up. You know, it might be two months, three months, you know, I don't know how long, but like, we really need to like, end this project and just complete it. And I think a dedicated person would be a great addition, especially since like, the previous, um, construction manager is gone. But, I mean, we can do that, we can do first a walkthrough this week, and we feel like, you know, there's still a lot of things to be done, then I think we need to push for that clerk. But again, it's like little things that, you know, if someone is not really there, like, paying attention constantly, you know, they can just keep going and going and going, and that, you know, could take us into the summer, that we really need to be like done by, by the end of the spring.
What do you guys think?
I think it can go either way, I like to do a walkthrough first, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, I can go either way. I think we should hold, as we all, I think we should hold IBI accountable, um, after it's been said and done, but when we get to that, we'll get to it.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, holding IBI accountable and an accounting or audit of the project is where I think more, you know, if we're gonna spend resources versus, you know, a clerk for the works, since we're close, I think spending some money to find out what this actually costs and an accounting of it would be money better spent, in my opinion.
Yeah, I was thinking of one versus the other.
Well, it's money where, I don't wanna throw bad money at finishing the project, we're close to the end, why are we gonna pay someone that has no leverage over IBI, because of the agreements that we're in? I agree that if we were starting out with the agreements and you could tie the agreements and hold IBI accountable, we already have agreements with them. So I think, more, in my opinion, if we're gonna spend money on wrapping that project up, and for transparency, it would be on an audit of the project, and we could do a walkthrough to see where we're at, and I think Paul is more than capable to get us over the line here, considering we don't really have leverage over IBI. So, I, I wouldn't say, at this point, I would be in favor of a clerk of the works, I'd be in favor of spending that money for auditing the project, is where my position would be.
I, I think what you mentioned is you wanna have someone that, on a bigger basis, really looking after the project.
Well, the thing is that, and, and I think Paul goes there every day, but he has to come back here and do the rest of his job, which is a big job, so he's, he's not there.
I will admit, it, it sucks up a lot of my time down there.
Yeah.
Because I really, I really am trying to get the building completed.
Of course.
And I'm on the phone constantly with the contractors, I'm checking on their status every day, what they got done, what needs to get done. I really, you know, trying to push, I, I know how everybody wants that building completed.
Yeah, no, I, 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 your efforts are really appreciated. This is not a reflection at all that you're not doing enough, you, you have, you have a lot on your plate. It's more just, we had that person, we had that function, it wasn't the right function, it should've been independent, as you pointed out, and that was a brilliant point, it should've always have been independent, and it wasn't. It was an IBI guy, basically, in their pocket, and so I think that was a major problem of the many in this project. But now that we don't have that, we can't even get, we can't get updates to this, there's a lot of things we can't get, that's not your job to do as facilities director.
Well, I, I did, there is a list of some of the things that are, are, been done, and some of the things we're still waiting for to get, to get completed.
To that specificity.
But not to like, when is it gonna be completed? And I know that we feel like we're near the finish line, but with all due respect, we felt like that in June, July, August, September, October, November, and now we're, you know, December, and now we're into January. So I know that it looks more complete, walk through, I couldn't tell you how much more months, because what you see superficially doesn't necessarily reflect how we're gonna be completed.
I can say that most of the major construction is now completed. But really, I mean, other than paint and some flooring, I mean, is to be done, all the ceilings are up now, all the walls are completed. We've got some paint, some floors, stair treads, um, you know, we still need the door hardware for the classrooms, we're waiting for that to come in. Other than that, a, a good portion of it's completed. You'd be surprised if we do a quick walk around.
Do you wanna get the will of the board, um, just to see just because, if we're, if we're not in agreement, we'll end up going around and-
Right, I was gonna just ask, we hadn't heard from your data yet.
So, my thought was, uh, it seems like there's, you know, pros and cons to it, I, I would defer to our superintendent and Director of Facilities to kind of look into it, and if there's something that, if you actually think it's worthwhile, and you can find someone and the cost you think makes sense, and that you actually think it would help you, then maybe present it as an option at our next meeting, but if not, just, you know, keep going, because it's also, based on this timeline, it, you know, it's quote-unquote supposed to be done by March, we're about to be in February, so, our next board meeting is in the middle of February, so if we're gonna approve somebody in the middle of February to get started, sometime at the end of February, they might be on-site for five days, and it might be done, so it might, it might at that point not be worth it, but-
That'd be talking at the end of maximum.
Why not just look into it? I mean, we're, it's not downside of that.
So if we do the walkthrough this week, and then we can see if we can contact, uh, someone who was clerk of the works on previous works a few years ago, if that person would be available, would get a charge, so I'm not gonna say we already be familiar with our facilities, and then we can-
So we decide that we meet him then in the next board meeting, he's already lined up, and, you know, ready to go.
Does that sound good to everybody?
Yes. Brian did bring up the, an audit of the project, and since I think the audit committee isn't, will be meeting in the same time-
Yeah, I would ask them to consider that.
-soon, we have an internal auditor for the first time in years, and they've done their, their first pass, and now they'll want input if we wanna do any deep dives on it. I, I would, I would certainly support, uh, we brought this up at the meeting, at, at the audit meeting, we brought it up in support, but publicly, I would support that we ask them to do an audit of this project. And I, I think if, if others agree, then it'd be good for those of us on the audit committee to know now, so we can bring it back to that meeting.
Yeah, I would support that.
I'd prefer to see what the list, that the, after the, like, the internal auditor still needs to present the risk assessment, so I'd like them to tell us what they think are priorities for a deep dive.
They, they didn't have any that were flagged. And, and we, I think everyone was, the report was emailed.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I haven't had to look at it.
Yeah, it was nothing high.
It was nothing flagged.
It was very low, the moderate, um, we are, I'm looking to schedule a meeting, if not next week, the following week, but it should be before the board meeting, the, this, the recording in February, okay? Yes.
So I'm just thinking-
But there's nothing flagged on there.
Yeah, so I was thinking before they meet again, it might be good, because the meetings aren't like every two weeks, it'd be good to give them direction, if the majority of the board, that was a good move, you know, so.
I, I mean, I feel that we, we need to do that.
Well, there's four of us on that committee, am I right? We could just, is it, am I wrong to say that we could decide at that committee?
No, the board would, you want the board to just, to, to give input to the committee?
Right, to the committee.
Well, we can also decide as an audit committee what we wanna recommend to the board, so that it's, it's a chicken and egg thing.
Yeah, I just-
If we feel strongly right now, we don't have to engage the audit committee on the issue, but I would like to hear from the other members of the audit committee and, you know, see what other options there are that, you know, maybe our internal auditor wanna recommend. I'm not saying I'm against it, I just think there's so many, I guess, like, there's so many different options for internal audits that we could hear from, that this is one that a few people have raised, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, it might be the best idea, um, but-
You wanna wait? Well, we'll wait before the next board meeting, so we can have a conversation at the next board meeting.
So, please, would be, just so I understand, an audit from, like, you know, all the work that, like, is done on our is public.
Mm-hmm. Right, and, and this way, there'd, it would be kind of more detailed and transparency to the board and the public.
Who would, who would conduct it?
Barack and Smith.
Yeah, I would support them.
I mean, I think the community's asking for it.
What is the, and what is the cost?
You know what, we, we, um-
We have to look it up, I, we, we-
Yeah, so, I mean, this isn't order the work, it's to give them feedback that we think this would be a priority, but again, it's chicken and egg.
It wasn't expensive though, it was within reason if I recall, you know, that what they given to us.
Yeah, it was seven or nine times, they want a quarter of the time.
I don't-
Yeah, I, I recommend that the audit committee look into it and give us a recommendation at the next board meeting.
Sounds good.
The add-ons weren't that, if I recall.
Yeah, I agree. There are two other items related to the South Harbor Learning Center, one is that we've now spent, I think, forty-five hundred dollars for the, um, parking spots, I think it was five parking spots at St. Andrews to be used for, um, the South Harbor Learning Center. The primary purpose was for ongoing staff, but then in the interim, the, uh, the vendors that are helping to construct it. I work around the corner and see the trucks, I've got pictures of them, all parked on one fourteen. I, you know, as they were doing the work today, I happened to drive through the parking lot at St. Andrews, not one car was parked there. There's no designated slots, so if it was gonna be more than five, or certain spots, you wouldn't know it. And it just seems like it is unnecessary funds being spent for an unused service, service, so, um, I understand that we, you know, we do have a clause to get out of the contract. There may be a time we need it, who knows if we will ever need those spots, but to be paying money for no one to use a service that no one needs right now, it seems, is just a waste of taxpayer money. So, I would like to put on the table that we should, um, we should change the status of that contract right now.
How many months have we paid already?
Well, it was retro, we wrote it on it in May, and then again in, in June, I voted no, but the majority voted yes, and it was retro to the beginning of May, so May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December, January. We have a thirty-day out, well, I've already paid February, so that'll be ten or eleven months, times five hundred dollars, so fifty-five hundred? You know, so, it, you know, it's not money well spent, and I don't know why we would continue to spend it.
And then going into September, it would be again another like nine months or something.
You know what, if we think we need it, we can always reengage, but we know we don't need it now, so to be spending it when we don't need it just seems wasteful.
I agree, unless we could try to negotiate some sort of credit, and maybe payments were suspended until-
I would try that route first.
Well, I'm not suggesting we ask for money back.
Why not, though? I mean, why not say, negotiate with them and say-
Change, amend it to change the effective-
Suspend, suspend payments and get the credit back, and then we can revisit the building elements.
Okay.
I think there was a lot of, the reason why it started so soon is because I believe there were, like, it took a really long time to get through different layers of church governance to approve it. I, I, I mean, I'm not emotional about it, like, if we wanna terminate it, it's, it's not, doesn't seem like it's going to good use, but I also know that if we terminate it, when we come to renegotiate, they might ask for market rates, which are much higher. So, that's the risk, so if we can find a middle ground and get it suspended, or a credit, given that they're both nonprofit organizations, maybe we can-
I would just wanna stop spending the money now, if there's a way to do it, you know, creatively like that, that's great, I just think we should stop the blood-letting on it.
Sounds like we should, we're okay with giving, I'll leave that direction if you have any idea. Right, um-
Did you, you have one more thing you wanted to raise first?
Um, I just, the, the other thing, rela, these are all expenses related to this project. Initially last year, the board agreed to, based on the recommendation of the superintendent, the, uh, to hire a third nurse, that was based on that when the children were occupying the South Harbor Learning Center, that building would need its own nurse. And then when there was a delay in the project, the rationalization for keeping that position filled was that there was a change in the, um, immunization law, and so there would be some work in the short term, over the period of a few weeks, or a month, or whatever, that was back in September. It's now January, and we're not putting children in this building until next school year, I'm guessing, it's not gonna be this school year. So, I, I just am trying to understand why, and bringing it up again, because it doesn't seem like any of the reasons why we added this third physician are continuing to be valid right now, and will not be valid until we're opening that building again. So, I'm, I, I'm trying to find ways to say, let's stop spending money when we don't need to, and it seems to be one place, another place.
I'll look into it and speak with the administrators and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
All right, so, um, we do have two, um, contracts under item ten, potential items not scheduled. Uh, these are contracts that I believe were sent to us by council at like five PM today, that's why they weren't on the agenda earlier. So I'd like to get a motion to approve, um, contract ten point one, um, which is a contract between South Harbor Learning Free School District and Mr. and Mrs. Howard and Maria Alina Quilte, and subject to the review and approval by council.
So I'm okay.
Anyone want a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, I've not, I've not read this, so. This is related to the wall, the building of the wall?
Which?
Do we wanna share with the public what it says, since it was supposed to be for the meeting?
Um, it's not, it's subject to review and approval by council, and it's not final, it's not signed by the other parties yet, so-
Okay, so then we can't, we can't share what it is?
Not yet.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No?
Okay, that is six, four, and one abstained, Brian, does that sound abstained?
And, um, may I add, a motion to approve contract, uh, under ten point two, which, uh, same idea, it's a contract between the district and Mr. and Mrs. Michael Quilte, subject to review and approval by council.
So I'm doing, it's okay.
Any discussion? Victoria, would you mind just, um, when you're doing the minutes, update the resolution to stay at approval by council, um, because that was something that-
Tom had mentioned was important. Okay, that is six, four, and Brian abstained.
Um, is there anyone here for public input too?
Sorry, guys. Sandy Carole, um, that is not Brittany. I wanna start by saying that the educational presentations tonight were fabulous. I wish they had been, uh, put on the web, maybe an email sent out, because they really were full of amazing, new and exciting things that are happening in our district, and that's really what we're about, is kids first. But it was just educational, so I didn't even realize it was gonna be that detailed. I would like to add, though, then we talked about that, as Mr. Nichols and I have spoke, I just wanna say going into spring season, fall season unfortunately with academic support, was actually not better this year, it was actually worse. Uh, Mr. Nichols and I have had that conversation, um, it was due to scheduling, because we had to go to different places. So, keep that in mind, as you're preparing your next gen and your programs, that, uh, kids are losing academic support, and we're losing valuable teachers who teach the IB courses. The Learning Center. I wanna start by saying that I think that the architect's last board meeting got a really bad rap. Where we live, there is contaminated soil, we are farmlands, there is going to be arsenic, carcinogens, there's gonna be tons of stuff in there. They did the appropriate things. They removed the soil, they tested it, they reported back to the district. That's what they were supposed to do, they removed it legally, they did their job. The job that didn't get done is, nobody told anybody, which is why it blew up on News twelve, because the information was not communicated. So, my question wouldn't be to have Broderick here tonight explaining about seventeen to sixteen milligrams, it would be, how does communication that could have been totally avoided, if you knew, not get to the board? Who in the district knew? That, to me, is a bigger issue. It's a huge issue, because that then leads the public to think, what else don't we know? So that's why we sit here and go, we want a forensic audit. You have been asked numerous times, over and over again, to do a forensic audit of this project. We know we've seen money go through and back and forth, nobody, Jennifer Pashimi, nobody can even begin to get a handle on what's going on with this, and they've said it publicly. So, my recommendation is, don't wait for it, run for that audit, because the more, the quicker you do that, the better off this project is gonna clean up, and we're in, we as a district are gonna look better, because we're looking pretty bad right now. The resolution on the, uh, medical inspector, was there a price associated with that, or The resolution on the, uh, medical inspector, was there a price associated with that, or did I not hear it? I do have that question. And I do wanna end with, um, if your buildings and grounds is saying that he could use the help, not saying that he wants to help or he wants you to spend money, I think you need to listen. He's got two buildings, a park, and now a third building, and a building that is a complete mess. And board members, with all due respect, when you sit here and you discuss things like, how much is that gonna cost? Where are we gonna get that money? You had eight hundred thousand dollars left over in your budget last year. People will value money well spent versus money that has been thrown out the window for the last year, because the oversight has been lacking so bad. So I would take the little nudge that you got and run with that one also. Thank you. I know it's late. Thank you guys for your time.
Anyone else here for public input two? Can I get a motion to reconvene into executive session to finish up the discussions that we were not able to finish up during the first executive session?
So we have to give a reason, we can't just say-
So let me just roll back to it.
Because, because on the agenda, it doesn't have that, it just, it's up open.
It was under section one oh five D and one oh five F of the open meeting.
So moving, it's okay.
Are we voting, how much you vote?